I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm gonna ask everyone to please have a seat. Roll call, Mr. Mustrel.
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Mr. Bono? Present. Mr. Fioki?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Wouldn't miss it.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing time, place, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. I'm gonna ask many school students, and Wallace School students, to please come up. You're gonna be doing the flag salute.
Mr. Rivera, Mr. Sabrana, I believe you have certificates.
Thank you.
Mr. Mustrel, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene in executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about any matter involving any collective bargaining agreement, or the terms and conditions of which are proposed for inclusion in any collective bargaining agreement, including negotiation of terms and conditions with employees of the public body, and employee matter, and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent the confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion and second for executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Yano, do we have any presentation this evening?
Yes, we do. We have three presentations. The first one will be Mr. Scott Mustrel, our Business Administrator. He will provide an update on the 24-25 budget. Let's just give Mr. Mustrel a moment to get set up. He'll be coming down to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you. We just wanted to give you an update on where we stand with the budget process for the 24-25 fiscal year. The first thing we wanted to cover, you'll see in your handouts for board members on the screen for the public. Went to go over the tax levy. For fiscal year 23-24, we had a 6% increase, which amounted to 2.1 million. For 24-25, we're asking for another 6% increase, which amounts to 2.2 million. The Vineland school tax rate would go from .765 to .8109. For the average home assessment, which is $161,990, this would affect them by $74.35, which, over the course of a year, is $6 and some change monthly. As far as tax rate history, we wanted to show the tax rate of 3.163, and how it's divvied up between county municipality and the school. The county has 1.25 plus the .013. The school has .765, and the municipality has the 1.093 plus the .042. So, the county takes up just about 40% of the tax rate. The municipality takes about 36% of the tax rate, and the school has 24% of the tax rate. The county is about 65% more than the school is, and the municipality is 48 and some change percent more than the school is. And I mention this because part of what I'm presenting is the increase in tax revenue. So we want everybody to get a feel for how the tax rate plays out right now between the three entities. As far as budgetary changes, this is the budget update portion. Excess surplus is a negative 3.2 million for fiscal year 24-25. Revenues, we're asking for 6%, which is 2.2 million on a $180 million budget. We're increasing our extraordinary aid by a million dollars. So total revenues would increase by 3.2 million dollars. Budgetary changes. Because of bargaining unit contracts, we know that contracts are gonna increase by approximately 3.25%, and that translates to 3.1 million. Increase in health insurance, which we know is gonna be about 8.5%, that translates to 2.5 million. The prescription premiums will go up no more than 4%, which is 315,000. We're in a health insurance fund. So within the health insurance fund, we've built up a surplus of a million dollars. So we'll be able to use that surplus next year to offset our expenses. Because premiums will be increasing, that means Chapter 78 and Chapter 44 will increase. For those of you who don't know what those are, that's the employee contribution to their health benefits. So we estimate that to increase by 349,000, which helps our budget. There's a decrease in CC tech rates by 250,000. They went from $2,300 per student to $1,800 per student, so that's gonna help us. And we have some outstanding CC tech credits with certified tuitions and such. That translates to 920,000, which helps our budget. We are in the last year of one of our bus lease purchases, which was set up as a balloon payment at the time, so we'll have to budget an additional 140,000 for that. We're estimating a million dollars for armed guards. We have to adjust one of our lease purchases for buses for next year to by 70,000. Every December, we receive word from the state, updates per the ASSA report. And they tell us how much more charter schools, more or less, in this case it's gonna be more, charter schools will be adjusted, which is gonna cost the district an extra 340,000 this year, so we include it in next year as well. Our per's annual payment is going up by $300,000. Our utilities for next year are gonna go up by $200,000. We have a preschool inclusion amount that we contribute from the district budget to the preschool grant. That has to increase by $350,000. We need to add additional, six additional special ed classrooms. That'll cost us 884,000. Our Inspira at the high school, we have to budget 80,000. That'll be the last year. We have to do that, I believe. We have eight positions right now that are funded through ESER funds. There are federal funds that were given to us. ESER III sunsets this year, at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year. September, to be more precise. So we have to fold those positions into our district budget. That'll increase our district budget by a million dollars. We have EIP costs that increase. We're estimating that by 454,000. We're working on one-to-one technology estimates to increase by 323,000, as well as backend technology estimates of 500,000. So budgetary changes amount to negative $9 million. We're planning on cutting Fund XII construction account by 2.25 million. We are utilizing our maintenance reserve, or half of it, for 2.5 million. So at the end of the day, we're looking at $4.3 million that we still have to find. The administrative team is working collaboratively to we're workshopping ideas to find that money. That completes the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you.
I don't have any right now. I know you're gonna be doing a whole nother budget presentation, so...
There will be. There'll be. This is just a budget update. This isn't a budget presentation.
I just wanted to make sure the new members of the board understand that, too. Thank you.
Yep.
Next, I would like to invite Mrs. Suzette DiMarci, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Mrs. Catherine Rivera, Supervisor of Science and CTE, to present Career and Technical Education at VPS.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited to be able to showcase and highlight our amazing CTE programs that we offer at the secondary level. Ms. Rivera, she is our Supervisor of Science and our Career and Technical Education Programs for the district. So at this time, who better to highlight each program than Ms. Rivera herself? So, Ms. Rivera, you ready?
Good evening. As Mrs. DiMarci said, my name is Catherine Rivera, and I'm the Supervisor of Instruction for Science and CTE. And I promise my presentation will not take any longer than an hour. So, what is CTE? Career and technical education refers to educational programs that provide students with opportunities to explore career pathways, gain practical skills, and prepare students for success in both higher education and the workforce. This September, we launched a CTE block at our middle schools, and the goal of the program was to expose students to our current high school CTE offerings. Students in grades 6 through 8 have a 30-day block, and the table below shows you about the various programs they learn within that 30 days. Here are some images. On the left, I have 6th graders from Pilla, and they're doing a studio production lesson, and they're learning how to use cameras. In the middle, we have 7th graders from Wallace Middle School, and they are learning how to tie a tie for the JROTC lesson on proper work attire and dress. And on the right-hand side, we have 8th graders at Pilla doing a lesson in construction trades on measurement and how to use basic tools. Here is a list of all of the programs we offer at the high school level, and I'm gonna briefly do a slide on each one for you. Our AFJROTC program's mission is to develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community. We have four courses in this program, and the curriculum they follow is aerospace science. They do some on leadership and education, and also a component on wellness. The classes are led by senior cadets and facilitated by the instructor. Agriculture, we use the CASE curriculum, and it's a nationally recognized program. We currently offer Intro to Ag, Plant Science, Food Science, and Safety. And we are very excited to launch a new course for this September called Floral Design Entrepreneurship. We have an articulation agreement with Rutgers University, where students can earn up to six college credits by taking Plant Science and Food Science and Safety. This fall, we chartered our first FFA organization at Vineland High School since 1964. Many of you were there at the ceremony, so congrats. And just a quick highlight, the FFA will be at Chick-fil-A February 21st, if you can come out and support them. Next is automotive. Our program is ASE certified. It's a three-year course designed to prepare students for placement into an entry-level automotive tech position or into post-secondary automotive training program. Students in this program can earn up to nine ASE industry certifications. Students do many competitions where they can earn scholarship money, as well as tools to work in their field. And VHS has also partnered with Subaru University, which gives our students access to factory-level training and certification with Subaru North America. Next is our business pathway, and we have Accounting I and II that's offered, Business Management I and II, and Marketing I and II. And there's a short description on each of those programs. Our Computer Aided Design, or CAD, course is a four-year course. We have an articulation agreement with RCSJ, where students can earn up to nine college credits. They also do many competitions through TSA, the Technology Student Association. Students learn how to work in a lot of CAD software and use the tools listed below. We have AutoCAD, Fusion 360, Inventor, 3D printers, Revit. And our CAD III students are able to take a NOCTI exam, which if successful, they can earn an industry credential. Construction trades, we are in Year Two of Construction Trades, and we're excited to offer Construction Trades III this upcoming September. And the program prepares students for a career in a construction field. Students focus on carpentry, and then they extend this into electrical, plumbing, and some HVAC in Levels 2 and 3. Currently, we're working to develop partnerships with local unions and training centers for students. And here are just a few pictures of students and some of the projects they've completed. And I do wanna highlight that our Year Two students have already that was the first shed they built, and they are on their third one. Our Graphic Design program is a three-year program designed to provide students with a comprehensive foundation in visual communication, digital media, and design principles. We offer three courses, and at the end of each of those courses, students are able to take the Adobe exam, where if successful, they can earn an Adobe certification. And we offer that for Illustrator, Photoshop, and InDesign. Our Graphic Design I course also has an articulation with RCSJ, where students can earn three college credits. At the bottom here, we have Graphic Design II students. They actually create the Mr. Vineland calendar. They do all of it. They create it. They interview them. They take photos of the candidates. And this is a short, really short video. I'm not gonna play it now because of time, but we have a screen printing room where our students design logos for T-shirts. They create the screen, and then they print and make the T-shirts. Yeah, it is awesome. All right. Next, we have Health Science. We are in Year One of our Health Science program, and it's designed to prepare students for both college and a career pathway. Currently, we have Elements of Healthcare, which is a dual-credit class with RCSJ as well, and students can earn three credits. Next year, we will be offering medical terminology as the next-level course. And we also have an agreement with RCSJ for for non-certificated programs, which are listed below. Information Technology, we currently offer two courses at the high school, Introduction to Programming and AP Java. We are actually very excited to offer a new course for September, AP Computer Science Principles by Design. And this course teaches coding with an added bonus of robotics. And our AP Java course also has an articulation with RCSJ, where students can earn three credits. And that's a short little video about our new course. Studio Production, this is a three-year course sequence. We have another articulation for this program with RCSJ, and students can earn up to nine credits, or three credits, per class. They take the NOCTI exam during Studio Production III, where they can earn a certificate. And there's just some projects listed that the students work on, but I do wanna say that our Studio Production III students run and do the live morning announcements at the high school. Cybersecurity is a program slash pathway that we're gonna offer students this upcoming September. We're very excited about it. And it's a way for students to earn college credit toward an associate's degree in cybersecurity through RCSJ. So students will be taking some of their core classes with Vineland High School teachers, earning dual credit, and some courses they will have to take at the college for dual enrollment classes. There are four industry certs that the students can earn in taking these classes, and they're listed below. And through the Gift of Success program at RCSJ, they offered four of our students free of charge to take the first Introduction to Networks class, and we have four students participating in that right now. This is also, excuse me, a video of a Vineland High graduate that went through the cybersecurity program at RCSJ, and he talks about how it's helped him in his career. So, just something fun to look at later. Okay, so with February being nationally recognized as CTE Month, I talked to my teachers and asked them, what can we do to celebrate all of our achievements? And we came up with a CTE carnival. So we're having our first annual CTE carnival. It will be on February 29th at VHS. We would like to invite all board members to stop by. The carnival will be periods 1 through 8, so it's all-day affair. Stop by anytime. We'd love to see you, and for you to come see our programs. And just some way of, some collaboration that took place between our classes and students. The CAD students are currently designing plans for games that we are gonna play at the carnival, and our Construction Trades students are actually gonna build the games. Our marketing students are creating a whole promotional plan for this, and our Graphic Design students are going to create the actual promotional materials. And last but not least, we are excited to announce that we have a CTE website with all of this information about our program. You can get on the link from the Vineland High School webpage. So, thank you, everybody. You know what? I see two of my CTE teachers, if they can just stand up, because they are why this program is so successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Marci?
Sorry.
We would just like, I mean, I would, being on the board for eight years, this is something that I've been wanting and hoping for. I know a couple of board members have really been interested in this. I'm so excited to see everything that you've put on there, automotive, the agriculture, the junior ROTC. I think people wanna know that we just had a major inspection, and we are now accredited, I believe?
We are, and our Vineland High School Air Force J ROTC program And our Violin High School Air Force J ROTC program is now like a model program for other districts. We rated so highly during the inspection period that we are a model program for other programs to come and visit. So we are super excited about all of our programs, and hopefully, we can continue to expand. We've been growing very rapidly, and all the program offerings are very exciting, and we know that our students love being part of them.
Right.
So we thank you for your support.
The FAA or FFA Chick-fil-A fundraiser? Could you like, just let us know which Chick-fil-A it's going to be at?
Cumberland.
Cumberland, okay.
Yeah.
Just send us out a reminder, please.
We certainly will. We certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Sneedon with a quick HIB report.
Mr. Yano, and good evening, Board of Education members. As a part of legal requirements, twice a year, we are asked to give a report of our harassment, intimidation, and bullying data, so I'm here to do that for you this evening. Our totals covering all of the elementary schools, the four middle schools, and the high school for 2023 and 2024, so far September through January, we had 57 reported incidents, 28 of which were founded, 29 of which were unfounded. And I certainly would be remiss if I didn't thank our school-level anti-bullying specialists who are doing the work for these intense investigations that go around each one of those numbers. So it takes sometimes days to complete with interviews and every other thing, so I really want to thank them for their efforts in keeping our students and our schools extra safe. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. For the ones that were founded, is there any kind of like remediation, or are we doing anything to help them get back into the schools and, you know, help them not do it again?
Certainly, the, both the victims and the offenders in these cases both get guidance. The offenders get some consequences, obviously, but then they get guidance so that they can make better choices and better decisions the next time. Any other questions? Thank you.
We're going to retreat back into executive session. We should be out shortly.
Please have a seat. Are there any questions or comments for the approval of minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Roll call, Mr. Mustrel.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes, except for abstain for December 6th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain December 6th, yes to the other three.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Rivera?
I have two reports, starting with the Facilities Committee meeting. Meeting was held on Thursday, February 1st at 4:30 PM. In attendance were Mrs. Cottis Patti, Mr. Medio, Mr. Bono, Mr. Yano, Mr. Mustrel, Mr. Farinaccio, and myself. Several items were discussed, including the Winslow Phase 2 HVAC and Danbarcy HVAC projects. Project is completed in full and functioning. Closeout items were delayed due to parts unavailability, so it remains on the list. As far as Danbarcy project is completed in full and functioning, closeout items were delayed due to warranty issues, so it remains also on the list. SR3 window projects, windows are completely finished at both locations. Contractors working on punch card items. Marie Thran windows are ordered and will be installed this summer. District camera Phase 2 project, a bid Phase 2 project, project is moving forward. Contractor has run all the camera wiring and expectation of Johnstone and Sabater Annex, with the exception, excuse me, of Johnstone and Sabater Annex. Substantial completion anticipated by the summer. We also discussed the VHS sign, which is currently being decided where it's going to be and where is it going, the new sign is going to go. We also discussed IESIP RFP is going out. Mr. Mustrel, Mr. Solerno, and Mr. Farinaccio are working to assemble the RFP and prepare for advertisement. We received an SDA grant, violently received a grant that will be used towards sectional roofing replacements at VHS North Tanner and Veterans Memorial School. Upcoming maintenance bids, several maintenance-related bids will be advertised over the next few months relating to maintenance services, including roofing, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and painting. Petway School odor in 9A, they're working to see where they can locate the odor. The networking security equipment, IT is working with on building, am building a server for networking and all the newer security components together for remote integration. CCT project Phase 2, IT is also working to integrate the additional Phase 2 cameras on the district's existing network. Cybersecurity policy, the administration is also working with the technology to enhance cybersecurity controls and create a district policy. Mr. Yano noticed some of the goals along with some of the challenges to implement enhanced protections within the district. Committee members are noted, also noted that the need for overall security initiatives. Also, on January 23rd at 5:00 PM, we had the ad hoc discipline committee, in attendance were Mr. Yano, Mr. Medio, Mr. Bono, Ms. Godiz Luski, Mr. Nunmacher, and Dr. Sneeden, and myself. Mr. Nunmacher, VHS supervisor, gave a presentation detailing secondary disciplinary referrals from September 1st, 2023 to January 11th, 2024. Afterwards, a discussion was held by the committee members regarding various elements of the secondary discipline code and how it is updated each September. The merit system and the attendance restoration pilot programs were also discussed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sabrana?
Yes, the ad hoc communications committee met on Monday. Due to my recovery from recent surgery, I don't have notes tonight, but I will have them distributed to everyone tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Curriculum instruction met on Monday, the 6th. Present were Mr. Yano, Mr. Marchi, Dr. Sneeden, myself, Mr. Silva, Ms. Acosta, and Mr. Sabrana. We discussed the curriculum instruction goals for 2024, the CTE presentation, AP Computer Science Principles by Design course, dual enrollment, grant ceremony, VHS credit recovery Twilight Program, High School AMSA Shadow Day, comprehensive targeted status, school status for the 24-25 school year, and we discussed the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment. Transportation Committee met yesterday. Present were Mr. Mustrel, myself, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Acosta, Ms. Blakely, and Ms. O'Brien. Driver recap fiscal year 23-24. 150 drivers are budgeted, 144 route packages where drivers needed, 140 filled positions, 12 subs, and 12 drivers in training. Average absences in the morning is 17.57, average absences in the afternoon is 21. There are 10 bilingual registrations, one student for a commercial township jointure. There were two accidents in December, three accidents in January, and there were no injuries. Team concept, December meet and greet director was on leave, will resume once position is filled. We have ordered 25 buses, four buses or 54 passengers should be ready sooner than later. The rest is a mix of 54 passenger and different size special education buses. Availability on this issue because of custom vehicles. We are pricing the outsourcing of routes to help with the transportation times due to attendance issues. Tier times, we are looking to make some changes. Transportation report confirms that the tier times are needed to be changed. We added garage tires. The new supervisor switched vendors to state contracted vendor, estimated savings of $18,000, and we discussed the driver contract. Thank you.
Do we have any other board committee reports? Seeing none, do we have a public meeting report by our board solicitor?
None.
I'm going to ask our student representative to come up, our 2024 class president, Denise Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Denise Gonzalez, and I am the senior class president at Vinland High School. My position is one that I am very proud of, and I enjoy being able to stand here as representative of VHS. Recently, our schools had so much to celebrate. Two amazingly talented seniors, Anthony Gonzalez and Eve Ortiz, were crowned Mr. and Mrs. Vinland. The students in the senior class also chose our 2024 prom theme Olympian Gala. There is so much to celebrate and talk about, but my time is limited since this meeting will be packed with so much important information, so I want to move on to discussing a topic that holds significance to many students at my school. It is no secret that even the idea of the board repealing Policy 5756 is upsetting to many students, parents, and faculties in the Vinland Public Schools District. But as someone who values discussion, I paid attention to the various voices speaking at the last board meeting, and I'm aware that to many parental rights hold high importance. It is important for parents to know what is going on with their child. However, Policy 5756 does not impose on the relationship between a student and their parent. It does not exclude the parent from the conversation regarding the gender identity of their child. The policy explicitly states that the school district should be aware of the relationship a student has with their parent. That way, the counselors can provide the steps to include the parent, or if necessary, protect the child from potential verbal or physical abuse. Instead of viewing these confidential student-staff interactions as blockages between the student and parent, you should see them as a stepping stone in the student's journey to bettering their relationship with their parent and themselves. The staff are educated and trained to treat all students kindly and to provide them with resources to maintain their mental health, not to influence them. Staff and parents both care about the safety of the children, and by repealing this policy, doors to mental and physical harm are opened, as you have heard and as you will hear. I understand that some board members also believe that 5756 is not necessary because there are other policies that protect every student. You value equality, which is wonderful, but this is where we need to strive for equity over equality. Yes, every student should have access to the same resources and protection, but our transgender students are part of a marginalized group and are facing something that cisgender students do not, so if they need more resources and protection to feel secure in those areas, they deserve to be given that. Our school community, including myself, will continue to fight for the rights of our LGBTQIA students. If I could say more, I would, but I know my time is limited, so please listen to all of the voices present here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we start public comment, I'd like to make a statement from the board. I am asking everyone, pro or con on any subject matter tonight, to please remain respectful of each other. Everyone has a right to their own opinion, whether we agree or we disagree. Everyone has the right to hear what everyone else is speaking about. Therefore, I will not tolerate anyone being disrespectful during any part of the board meeting. I also want to emphasize that there is no dialogue between the public and the board members. When you come up, please state your name and where you're from, and please keep your comments to three minutes. We will be strictly abiding to that three minute. We have many, many yellow sheets. Mr. Mustrel?
Marsha Bailey? Marsha Bailey? Oh, there we go.
Hello, everyone. Well, I'm just here to say that I'm not agree with some of these things that I see and this 5657, 5756, because I would like to know what's going on with my children in school. I would like to know what they would like to be called, because I teach my kids at home the right way, and if anything is going on in school, I would love to know what is going on with my children and what name anybody or themselves would like to be called, because I give them a name when they was born, and I would love for them to keep that name. And if anything that they want to do without my knowledge, I would like to know what's going on in school, because I think school should be a safe place for them, and when I send them to school, I expect that anything is going on in school, parents have a right to know what's going on with their children if they want to do things differently. When I hear this thing, somebody knocked on my door and told me about this meeting, I was so caught up with this meeting, because I was in Vinland, I didn't even know nothing about this meeting. And my kids come home and tell me some stuff sometime, and I'm like, okay, don't, you know, just be you, because it's, we live in a tough world. I don't care what nobody want to do or what other people want to do and what you want to be. I would love, whatever my children want to be, I would like to know what they want to be, and school don't encourage them to be somebody else when I'm teaching them something else at home, so. So I'm strongly disagree with what is going on, that the children, that school can give the kids a right to name or call what they want to call. I'm strongly disagree with that. I would love for parents to know what's going on with their children when they're not agreeing with calling them different names from the name that they give them at home. Thank you.
Going forward, I'm going to call two names. One can go to, the first one can go to the podium, the second one can have a seat right next to the podium. Melanie Martinez and Robin Wolf.
Hello, my name is Melanie Martinez, and I would like to say I disagree with Policy 5756. I read through the 10 pages of the policy and how it basically states how the school does not have to notify parents of what's going on with their children at school. Parents and students and their children should always have open lines of communication. Parents need to be there for their kids, and if kids aren't telling their parents this, then we can't have open dialogue with our children. We can't tell them, hey, I accept it, or this is why I disagree, or why do you feel this way? There's lots of reasons why keeping secrets from parents is not acceptable, and if schools expect parents to have open dialogue with them and to discuss things with the school, then the school also needs to discuss things with the parents. We should never. The school is there to teach our children about academics, and yes, you are worried about their mental health, and so are we as their parents, and we want to make sure that our kids are happy and healthy, and we also need to be able to teach them our values as well, not just the values that are being taught at school. So I do believe, like, if you want to make accommodations for students, absolutely make accommodations for students, but parents need to be part of that. They need to be in the loop, they need to know what's going on, and also, the other students need to, in the policy it states basically, a student is allowed to be in, the student, the school district shall allow a transgender student to use restrooms, locker rooms based on the student's gender identity, meaning a boy could be in the girls locker room and fully intact. How might these girls feel? Because quite frankly, it's awkward enough for girls to change in front of other girls. So for them to change in front of boys? For them to change in front of boys is something that's mentally distressing for them as well. So keep in mind their mental state as well, because if you want to talk about mental health, keep all the students in mind. Thank you.
Next up, after Ms. Wolf, will be Gina Russo.
Moving forward, can we just ask, state your name and where you're from, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Yano, esteemed members of the board. My name is Robin Wolf. I've been teaching in Vinland since 2004. As long as I've been teaching here, I've been commended for my ability to build rapport, to make connections, to make students feel safe enough to share and be themselves in my classroom. Commended for developing student trust. The description of distinguished teaching practice on row six of our observation rubric reads, "Teacher interactions with students reflect genuine respect and caring for individuals as well as groups of students. Students appear to trust the teacher with sensitive information." The revocation of this policy is at extreme odds with that which we have all been encouraged to do in our classrooms and would sit in opposition to the dictates of our observation framework. Not only does this revocation of policy demand that we break our students' trust when they need us most, it's also in direct conflict with the newly adopted portrait of a graduate framework that has been implemented in this district. Adaptability and empathy are both tenants of our district's portrait of a graduate vision. I'm sure you see the irony here. Our students are expected to understand, quote, "to understand and balance diverse views and beliefs to reach workable solutions and to demonstrate flexibility in their thinking" when their school board is not. Our students are expected to demonstrate awareness, sensitivity, concern, and respect to connect with others' feelings and to attempt to understand the experiences of others while their school board cannot or will not. There has to be some compromise, some common ground we can reach on this issue rather than throwing out this entire policy that was put into place many years ago, 10, to protect the most vulnerable population of our students. I encourage the board to redirect their attention to real and necessary changes that need to be made in the district rather than this issue, which strikes me and many of your constituents as political and cynical in nature. Please put the money you would spend on lawyers toward buying new books and investing Please put the money you would spend on lawyers toward buying new books and investing in technology. The whole community will be better for it. Thank you.
Next up, after Ms. Russo, is Vicki Miller.
Hi, my name is Gina D. Russo. I am a Vineland resident, a Vineland taxpayer, a Vineland Public Schools parent, and a Vineland Public Schools teacher. I am speaking tonight in support of policy 57-56. Policy 57-56 is state law. As a school board, your job is not to create laws, but to uphold them. All Vineland Public Schools teachers are required to obey the law. I support the law because not all parents are supportive, and we don't know what children's family life is like and what it's like when they get home. And I thank the New Jersey State Legislature and Governor Murphy for passing this law. I believe that the discussion of policy 57-56 is political. The policy has been in effect since approximately 2014 with no issue. Now, all of a sudden, it's a problem. Instead of playing politics, the Vineland School Board should be discussing the problems at the high school. I teach eighth grade in the Vineland School District. My students do not want to attend Vineland High School, not due to transgender students, but due to perceived safety issues. We should be discussing hiring full-time security guards and paying them a fair wage, along with having police officers in the high school, and also hiring more counselors. If the community does not feel that the high school is safe, they will not send their children, and we will continue to see students go to other area high schools. I thank you for your consideration on these matters. Please consider this before you cast any vote that will rescind policy 57-56. Thank you.
Vicki Miller. You're not speaking? Thank you. Barbara Otero and Tashman Johnson, please.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Otero, and I'm here to speak against the policy 57-56. This is my list of expectation for the public school. One, there should be a limit on teacher's speech in the classroom. There should be a total transparency between the school and the parents. There should be an open record request to be provided to any parent on any given day. Public school teachers are paid with tax dollars, and I, as a taxpayer, demand that the instruct, that they instruct as established by the state and district standards. Anything else is misuse of funds. My child has the right to choose to opt out of any planned lesson that violate my family's value... And the school must provide a suitable learning alternative. I want the freedom to reassign my child from any problematic classroom. I have a great concern in my child's mental health that will affect her learning disabilities with the political agenda to indoctrinate my child into some fantasy, make-believe thinking. The First Amendment of free speech and critical thinking applies to my child too, and the public school needs to adapt and apply it to all the students. Let me remind you that public school is public. My child deserve a better education than that to be indoctrinated with gender ideology. Gender ideology is perverted, it's sexual, and immorally sinful. It is against biblical standards. It is... It is pornographic, and it's the exploitation against innocent children. It is for the children's well-being that both mentally and physically not to teach gender ideology. The suicide rate is much higher in children being taught this idea. You do not have the right to separate my child from me so that you can pollute my child's mind with worldly garbage.
Ms. Johnson. After Ms. Johnson is Stephen Andrews.
Hello, my name is Tashman Johnson, and I'm from Vineland. And I'm also against policy 56-57. My thing is, I believe everyone deserves to be treated fair, equal, we are all human beings. But I also think if you're going to put a policy in place, it should be fair, and all kids should be considered, not just the LGBT community. And the reason why I say that is, I read a couple parts in the policy, and it is taking away the parents' right. If you are going to say, in the policy, as I go over the policy, it brought many questions to mind. Okay, was this policy put in place to protect the LGBT children? Or was it put in place to take away parental rights while the kids are in school and use board of education to do it? Because everything that they put in here, it says, oh, board of education should back the LGBT community by not telling the parents. It also states if a minor, if a parent does not agree with a minor name change for the superintendent to contact their board attorney. So are you telling me that if my child come to me and said, okay, I want to be called Pat because his name is Tom, and I disagree, the school should call the board, I mean, call a lawyer? So I have no say? I have, I read it. I have no say. I also, yeah, that's what he's saying. Yes, that's what he's saying. So to me, it's a take it or leave it. This is what the LGBT community says while the kids are in school, and if the parents do not agree, oh, well. The parents do not have to be told what goes on in school. That is wrong. That is completely wrong. I want to know what's going on in school. If my child commit a crime in school, you, they're going to call me and tell me. So tell me why if my child is in school saying, oh, I want to dress this way, or I want to be addressed this way, I should not know. Do not tell me one side and don't tell me the other, or guess what? Don't tell me nothing at all. That's what, so just don't tell me nothing at all. If you think there's something going on in my home, if you think that I am not being a fair parent, if you think that abuse or so is going on at home, how about give me a phone call? Let's meet up with the guidance counselor. Let's see why my kid do not want to tell me certain information, but don't keep that information away from me, because that is not fair.
Ms. Johnson, could I ask you to finish up, please? We're at three minutes.
My thing is, this policy need to be looked over, it need to be written over, and it need to be done fairly, to where all kids can be treated fairly, not just one side.
After Mr. Andrews, we'll have Justin Roig.
Excuse me one second, please. Mrs. Scott Espady, the public comment should be directed to the board, so this way we have protocol followed. If the speakers would address the board. Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Andrews, and I am a Vineland resident. I'm a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, and I am a teacher at Vineland High School for the last 13 years. At VHS, we have an extremely diverse student body of nearly 3,000 pupils. I am continually amazed by their passion, their perseverance, and their potential to make a difference in our city and beyond. I am honored to advocate on their behalf anytime that I am asked by my students to do so, which is why I am here tonight. Policy 57-56 has been in place since December of 2014, as many others have stated. Over the last 10 years, it has been effective and efficient in providing guidance related to the privacy, safety, and well-being of our trans students. When our LGBTQIA+ students feel safe and valued at school, they attend regularly, participate actively, and achieve profoundly. I am in awe of the courage that they demonstrate on a daily basis by being their authentic selves. Our trans students deserve your care, they deserve your consideration, and they deserve, most of all, your respect. I urge you to keep policy 57-56 in place on their behalf. Thank you very much for your time.
After Justin Roig, we'll have Danielle Janascoli.
Quick correction, that's Justin Roig. Hello, my name's Justin, I'm an alumni of this district, graduated almost two years ago, and, yeah, from here, grew up here, going to college because of this school district, proud alumni, and I'm appalled. According to the National Institute of Health, 73% of transgendered adolescents reported psychological abuse, 39% reported physical abuse, and 19% reported sexual abuse. Compared with their heterosexual and cisgendered adolescent counterparts, transgendered adolescents had a higher rate of psychological abuse. According to Chapman Hall, the University of Chicago, LGBTQ youth had 100%, 20%, and higher risk of reporting homelessness compared to youth who identified as heterosexual. The report found that one in 30 youths ages 13 to 17 experienced some form of homelessness over the, or 12-month period, and one in 10 young adults 18 to 25 experienced a form of homelessness over a 12-month period. I'd hate to see what that statistic looks like in here, what is the poorest county in the state of New Jersey. My question is, why do we want to risk the lives of children? Because that's what we're doing by repealing this policy. Why are we trying to out-kids and put them at risk of physical and/or verbal abuse, homelessness, ostracization from their families? It's not the school district's job to protect, to harm them, it's their job to protect them. And sometimes that means protecting them from their parents, protecting them from situ... I didn't speak over you, you don't speak over me, thank you very much. Pardon me for a second, I'm trying to find my footing. If I can have an extra 20 seconds, thank you very much. And sometimes that means protecting them from harmful situations at home, and that's what policy 57-56 is for. To the parents who are concerned, because I understand that makes a sizable demographic here, I'm sorry to have to be the one to tell you, but if your kids are scared to tell you about their pronoun, what their pronouns are, that's your job to make sure your kids feel loved and supported enough in the home, so that they're scared not to tell you. No one owes, and let me make this very clear, let me make this very clear, from the age of 16 to the age of 60, no one owes you to come out to them about their sexual orientation, their pronouns, their experiences. That is their concern, and if you truly believe that is a matter of their concern, then stop trying to force them to tell you. And I hear, oh, parental rights, parental rights, yes. We need to get rid of this buzzword, because we need to discuss parental rights of the right to put food on the table, the right to house kids, the right so that, the right so that kids aren't homeless, so that they can go to college. Parental rights is not taking away some, your parental rights stop when you take someone else's rights. Superintendent Yano, you put it best to the Atlantic City Press on policy 57-56. Many of our students have supportive families, some do not. Some are exposed to very tragic situations. We don't want to have that on our hands. I knew people in this school district, when I was going here, were exposed to those tragic situations. I knew people in this school district who were beat in the bathrooms, who were beat at home for being trans. Do we really want to enable that? And let's talk straight talk for a minute. We do not have the money to take, to take, to take a... We do not have the money to be sued. May I please finish my statement considering I lost time before? I'm almost, I'm almost done, I promise. They spoke over me. I would like to have the chance to finish my statement. To finish my statement...
15 seconds.
...our district is amongst one of the poorest in the state. Monmouth tried this and lost. Why are we trying to do it here? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for giving me extra time.
After Ms. Janascoli, we're going to have Miko Lucid.
Hi, my name is Danielle Janascoli, and I'm speaking here tonight as both an educator and a parent. Many people speaking in opposition of policy 57-56 have had zero experience with students in the classroom, or have never developed relationships deemed safe by the student. I am not one of those people. In my 33 years of teaching, I have lost count of how many times I've walked students down to our school counselors in order to gain some guidance for myself and the student. I have utilized our counselors' vast resources to help students with whatever issues they may be facing. That is what we do. Teachers are not out to get parents or to create these invisible wedges that you've been misguided into believing. Most of us are actually too busy teaching. Speaking to you now as the proud parent of a trans child, I'd like to share with you the letter my son wrote to me in 2016, after he had already told a few friends and a trusted teacher. I'm going to read some highlights from it now. "For a long time, I'd known that I've been different. It's just taken me forever to figure it out. Basically, what I've been dying to tell you, but never knew how to, is that I'm transgender. It's been a monstrous roller coaster of confusion. It's like I've been forcing myself to stay that little girl you've always known, but that I've never been. I've already secretly taken steps toward becoming the person I was supposed to be by educating myself and purchasing a chest binder. I know this is new and foreign, it is for me too. I feel like the best way to do this is together. Just take it day by day, like we do with everything else. I really don't know how to end this. I've been trying to write this thing for months. As weird and as awkward as it may be, we can talk about it later if you want. I'll see you later. I love you. You're the best you really are." That's me. Communication comes in all forms. My son came from a welcoming, accepting home, still does, yet he still needed time to figure it out for himself. I'm grateful that he had people to confide in. When he was ready to trust me, he confided in me. I'm grateful that no one outed him and that he came to me on his own. Because he was acknowledged on his own terms, he has grown to be a successful, confident, caring, and quite handsome young man today. By keeping this policy in place, you'll responsibly provide teachers and staff with the guidance needed to communicate with the parents when it's deemed safe for the student and the student is ready to disclose, because that is the true theme of this policy. Thank you.
After Mr. Lucid, we have George Galanthin.
My name is Miko Lukida. I live in Hamilton Township. I serve as Director of Aqua, which serves LGBTQIA+ organizations in South Jersey. Attempts to repeal policy 57-56 have been made around the state, pushed significantly by external organizations like the New Jersey Project, which at least one board member here is connected with. Arguments made against the policy are rooted most often in ignorance, misinformation, and flat-out hatred. Bear with me as I explain why these arguments hold no weight. Argument one, this policy is going to lead to boys in girls' bathrooms. Trans women are women, trans men are men, and non-binary people are non-binary. The policy does not create new rights, it clarifies existing civil rights. Students are able and will be able to use the bathroom they identify with. This policy does not change that. Argument two, if this policy doesn't give rights, why do we need the policy? Because a parent should not need to be a legal scholar to understand what rights their child has when they are in their schools. Argument three, if there is no policy, we can't be sued for protecting, for not protecting students. If there is no policy, the responsibility for how to handle transitioning students lies with staff and administration, and if they have no guidance and if there is turnover, it leaves the district open to the risk of civil rights lawsuits. Argument four, the spirit of this policy is fine, but the language needs to change. This was the compromised language. That's why the language took so long to be created once it was required. Also, you wouldn't sell your house without a new place to live, so maybe don't remove the policy without a replacement one in hand. Argument five, the policy leaves parents out of the discussion. As has already been said tonight, this policy explicitly includes language identifying circumstances where the parents must be informed. The approach from the policy simply prioritizes... The approach from the policy simply prioritizes student safety and protecting their civil rights. Argument six, there's a parent suing a district because their child transitioned. That lawsuit is being brought by a parents' rights lawyer who has failed three times in court, and the lawsuit has had filing issues, and no harm can be proven to the person bringing the suit. If you're worried about lawsuits, consider instead an established attorney from the Attorney General's office coming after the district for violations of civil rights. Argument seven, safe adults don't keep kids' secrets. This would only make sense if keeping the secret is what was putting the child at harm's way, however, this is the opposite. We have seen too many young people kicked out, or worse, because they have been outed against their will. Argument eight, this is about parents' rights. This policy protects civil rights, and protects children from harm. These things are held in high esteem, protected by the Constitution, New Jersey laws, and various federal and state court rulings. Respectfully, parents' rights have never had the same legal protection as civil rights have had, and parents are not being harmed by this policy. In closing, I have seen enough of these repeal attempts to know where the votes will go. This speech addressed to the board was meant for the ears of the audience here today. The excuses for votes against the policy are hollow, without merit, and easily defeated in three minutes or less, and now the audience can confidently say that ignorance cannot be your excuse. With all due respect, good luck convincing your constituents that putting your students and their taxpayer dollars at risk-
Thank you.
After Mr. Galanthan, we'll have Joanna Durazi.
Good evening. My name is George Galanthan, and I haven't been in this auditorium since 1974, when both my sisters graduated high school here. Vineland is a forward-looking community, it's the largest area-wide community in the state. It has a lot of smart people, a lot of self-employed people, a lot of people with businesses, they think ahead. Well, how about if we think this, 5756 is not a policy, it is a procedure. Look it up, what's the difference? The procedures, now, let's talk about who the parties are to 5756 procedurally. School board, consultants, the school, and the child sitting in the bathroom, who's gonna get the hell beat out of her when somebody decides to go back to being bisexual, or whatever he's gonna do. It's gonna be Loudoun County, here we go. So, there's also the insurance companies. I would advise the school board, as a layman, I'm not licensed in New Jersey, I would advise them to be respectful of the sovereignty that was not delegated to the government. We have limited governments in this country. We, the people, the families, retain the sovereignty. We have a president of the New Jersey Senate, we have a president of the New Jersey Senate who's out of office because he didn't respect private property. I did it to him. Now, lawyer up, get your insurance policies, because the state of New Jersey is a limited government, and if you haven't seen it, it's coming, and it's not gonna be nice. You go down now to talk about violence, I did four tours in Central Asia, I've met the devil, I've seen it, and we got rid of a lot of it. Go down there to Hamilton, down in Salem County, over 200 people got their heads smashed in, and the blood's still on the wall. It was the Revolution, 1776. Our sovereignty is being completely eradicated. Watch the movie Who Is John Gault? A company that just said, "We're not gonna save everything for the people," and then it's really the government we're saving it for. Example, that guy that got out of office? The government starts monopolies with different areas that private enterprise create. Look up Robert, what's it, Fortune, took tea out of China. Look up the Wadiya, 1774. Anyway, long story short, I'm out of time, lawyer up, it's gonna be fun.
After Ms. Durazi, we'll have Shannon King Norton.
I am Johanna Durazi, I use she and her pronouns, I'm here as a representative from Glisten, Southern New Jersey, a local chapter of a national organization that specializes in supporting schools in their efforts to support LGBTQ students. I also serve as the Training and Education Development Coordinator for the Atlantic County Queer Alliance. I also went back to being bisexual. Last month, I was present here at the Vineland Board of Education meeting, and I provided testimony that explained that over 50% of youth experiencing homelessness in the state of New Jersey identifies as LGBTQ. This is mostly due to familial abuse and rejection. I explain that policies like 5756 create a more inclusive and supportive school setting, where school becomes a protective factor, keeping them safe, affirmed, and motivated to reach their academic potential. Research backs these claims, as students who have policies like 5756 are less likely to miss school because of the feeling of being unsafe, and more likely to feel a part of their school community. Supporting all students means prioritizing the policies that are proven to enhance a feeling of belonging for the most vulnerable, including transgender students, who are more likely to experience suicidality and depression. Policy 5756 has been ineffective in Vineland since 2014, it was revised twice, and last amended in 2019. Why must it be repealed now? A decade of comprehensive guidance to educators on supporting transgender students, multiple opportunities for edits, now it must be eliminated completely? If the Board of Education believes that there are changes that need to be made, why not just make them? Leaving the educators without any enumerated guidance puts them at risk for not knowing how best to handle a very nuanced and delicate experience. 5756 should not be repealed until or unless there is a comprehensive policy ready to be put in place that provides guidance to educators on what they should do when a student comes out to them as transgender. Without this guidance, transgender students are at risk, and teachers are without support. Lastly, when a parent is safe and supportive, their child can be open with them. Transgender kids fear telling parents when they feel that they will not accept them. Transgender kids fear telling their parents when they believe they will be their bully. Transgender kids fear telling their parents before they are ready to tell them. 5756 does not encourage secrecy. 5756 respects autonomy for students to come out when they are ready, and makes schools a place where they can do so with minimal fear of repercussion. Please do not take that protection away from transgender students.
After Ms. Norton, we'll have Joey Perella.
Good evening. I'm Shannon King Norton, teacher at Vineland High School, educator for 25 years, mother for 16. I'm in favor of keeping policy 5756 in place. We teach children from a young age differences, respect, kindness, and compassion towards people we know and people we don't, those who are like us and those who are different. We know ourselves better than anyone can. Transgender people are no different, and know themselves, who they are on the inside, better than anyone else. That is why it's so important to respect another person's identity. We feel that every student deserves to be celebrated and seen for exactly who they are. We strive to create a safe space where all Vineland students can express their authentic selves and become bright lights in our community.
Steven Plevis will be next.
Good evening, Superintendent Alano, Board President Kotospati, and members of the Vineland Board of Education. Again, my name is Dr. Joey Perella. I am here, I am a resident here of the city of Vineland, and I'm a proud member of the transgender community. I am a trans woman, my pronouns are she/her. I am speaking this evening in favor of policy 5756. We have heard plenty this evening, and we'll hear more about the policy, and you should have a clear understanding about what the policy does and doesn't do. But again, policy 5756 lays out guidance for administration and staff. It provides the best practices for staff to follow when a student expresses that they are trans. It encourages that a plan be put in place to protect the child's well-being. We should also know by now that repealing 5756 does not change New Jersey or federal law. It cannot take away requirements of the school to recognize the gender identity of a student, the name that they use, and their preferred pronouns. Repealing 5756 also won't prevent trans students from using the bathroom that aligns with their gender, or from participating on sports teams that align with their gender. So your question may then be, if the presence or absence of this policy can't change the law or expectations of the staff and administration, then what harm is there in repealing this policy? The harm is from the message that it will send to our LGBTQ students. They are watching us, they are desperately looking for adults to stand up for them. Repealing 5756 says, "Sorry, you're on your own." It says you would rather appease a small misled constituency, so you would rather ignore their overwhelming support from the LGBT community, educational experts, and mental health experts. It says you would rather leave these students feeling abandoned than keep a policy that has caused no issues. Here are the facts. LGBTQ youth suffer higher rates of suicidal thoughts and attempts than their straight peers due to the way they are stigmatized by our society. A third of LGBTQ youth report having poor mental health at some or most times in the past year because of discussions of anti-LGBTQ policies. Over 53% have reported some form of harassment in school because someone thought they were LGBTQ. 12% of our youth have had to withdraw from school because of the harassment that they have faced. Among LGBTQ youth, those who experience some form of harassment or mistreatment face or attempt suicide rate at three times that of their LGBTQ peers who do not. But there is hope, and to my trans siblings and family, there will always be hope. As board members, you have the opportunity tonight to keep our trans and LGBTQ students safe from becoming another heartbreaking statistic. Show that this school, district cares about them, and keep policy 5756.
I believe Mr. Plevis has left, so next we'll have Victoria Santos, and then Andrea
Good afternoon, Board of Education members, parents, teachers, pastors, and community. My name is Victoria Santos. I'm a devout Christian, wife, mom, daughter, and teacher. I strongly disagree with policy 5756. I wanna begin, I wanna begin by saying that as we as Christians love the LGBT community, and we pray for them always, in a free society, this policy would violate our right to free speech and free exercise of rights under the First Amendment. This policy would require teachers to deceive us as parents and caregivers about their child's gender. According to Sarah Partial, a senior fellow, she states, "Parenting one's own children is a universal and inseparable right that predates the government itself. No matter how often progressive educators claim to know what's best for our children, the beating heart of every parent knows better." My husband is a clinical psychotherapist. He states, "Hiding the gender identity from the still-developing children's parents is not productive for their mental health, and it could lead to psychological distress, and medical interventions have not been researched heavily enough, and could also incur additional trauma." I say, "Give an inch to affirming gender ideology policies, they will take a mile." Parents, as mothers and fathers, we lead and nurture our home, and some of us help lead our children into better lives under the power of Jesus Christ. No one has the right to lie to us about our children. Teachers, teachers, this could ensue discrimination by staff itself if a teacher refuses to share information to a parent. This policy could also affect, as other parents have stated, the use of bathrooms and locker rooms. Now, also, there's been several misinformation and statistics throughout this night. There's absolutely no evidence-based, peer-reviewed data that shows that affirming transgenderism would reduce the suicide. In speaking with, in speaking with local teachers, this policy affects the Latin population, and some parents do not speak English, and so they were challenged to share their opinions tonight. Speaking of lawsuits, school districts in Virginia, Wisconsin, Iowa, and Montana have been sued by parents and parent groups after discovering that they were aiding students and transgender transitions. And to the church, we are aware, please be aware that partial religious accommodations are not always effective. I leave you with this verse, 2 Corinthians 10:5, "We demolish arguments and every pretension that sets itself up against the knowledge of God, and we take every thought captive and make it obedient to Christ."
After, after Ms. Nieves, we'll have Deborah Waldorf, please.
Good evening, Vineland School Board. I'm actually here on behalf of Louise Walpin, who is a legislator, was at the forefront of getting marriage equality passed in New Jersey, and was, her and her wife are actually the first couple to be married after that passed. But she's also a psychiatric nurse practitioner. Good evening, my name is Louise Walpin, I'm a retired psychiatric nurse practitioner with over 25 years' experience. I'm sorry if I am unable to be here today due to personal circumstances. I have treated many children and families from Cumberland County and Vineland over the years. I am a mother and grandmother. Today, I'll be speaking with my psychiatric NP hat on. Pro-family, protect life, justice, we all believe in those things, yet we have difficulty finding a petition of agreement. This puts our children's lives at risk, and threatens our families. I've worked with many transgender children, and some of whom came to me with a history of suicidal ideation and attempts, not because they are transgender, but because, rather due to stigma, bullying, or parental invalidation and threats. Children living in homes with no history of abuse who, upon coming out, are told by their families that they will never be accepted, what a conundrum. Do they deny who they are, take to the streets, or take their own lives? The statistics are horrifying. 45% of homeless LGBTQIA+ youth have been kicked out of their homes by their parents. The largest percentage of homeless youth are trans, though they make up only 0.5% of the population. The average age of homelessness for trans children is 13 and a half years of age. Approximately 50% of trans youth seriously consider or actually attempt suicide in any year. I know these children, and I work to preserve their lives. From that perspective, I'd say please keep policy 5756 in place. It saves lives by helping trans children, trans versus difficult journey safely, and not alone. While there is no affirmative responsibility to notify a parent, the policy does not endorse keeping secrets. Here's the flip side, however.
I'm gonna need to ask you, thank you.
That's fine, I think I got my point across, thank you.
After Ms. Waldorf, we'll have Pastor Alberto Jimenez.
My name is Deborah Waldorf, I am a teacher and a parent in this district, and I am deeply concerned the board is leaning against students' rights. As an English teacher, I stress the importance of citing sources or bringing the receipts. Yes, I will share my sources with the board. We teach the students, not the parents. We are- We are state mandated reporters for child abuse and neglect. Repealing 5756 puts our students in danger. It is, if a transgender student is harmed after being outed by the district, the district will be liable. This may include domestic abuse, homelessness, personal body harm, or worse, death by suicide or suicide, murder by a parent or family member. The National Network for Youth reports, "The primary cause for homelessness for LGBTQ youth is a lack of acceptance by family members of a youth's identity." Of the 35,000 students polled in the National Survey for Youth Mental Health, 40% were kicked out of or abandoned due to their LGBTQ identity. Repealing 5756 will put many of our transgender students out on the street. The 2023 edition of that survey found that roughly half of transgender and non-binary youth had considered attempting suicide, and nearly 1 in 3 said their mental health was poor most of the time due to anti-LGBTQ policies such as repealing 5756. Why should the student's right to privacy be given more initial weight than the parent's right to know? Of those 35,000 students polled, only 1 in 3 found their home to be identity-affirming. Another survey found, "A significant number of victims of abuse from their families think support would have been helpful." That is what this policy provides, advocacy, advice, and information. Policy 5756 helps our transgender students work WITH school personnel to inform their parents. The caveat is that the student's safety is paramount. Face it, these kids already talk to supportive parents. If a student is scared to come out to a parent, there is a reason. 40% of the abusers are the parents. Perhaps the safety of our students is not as important as the potential financial cost to the district. The New Jersey State Attorney General has filed three lawsuits against districts that have repealed similar policies. You are setting up the district to be sued. Finally, empathy is the crown of our portrait of graduate, which is right up there only an hour ago. Here's a refresher of that term's definition, the ability to understand and share the feelings of another. Leave this policy in place and model the empathy we are teaching our graduates. Thank you.
After Pastor Jimenez, we'll hear Nico King.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, school superintendent, administration, staff, parents, students, and public. My name is Pastor Alberto Jimenez of Wallahole Fellowship Church located at 507 East Quinn Street here in Violin. I'm here to speak about Policy 5756 concerning transgender students. At last month's meeting, I spoke about the importance of keeping and maintaining relationships within our schools between teachers and parents and not betraying that trust that has been built year after year. As a historian, I thought it was important to educate myself and the public as to why we're here. Firstly, thank you for the access to the policies of the Board of Education that can be easily accessed on the internet. I was able to print out Policy 5756 and Policy 552, which I have right in front of me. In Policy 552, the HIB, you have 10 pages and 17 sections that highlight the importance of this policy. After reading the policy, I highlighted Section 2, I mean, Section C on page 2 where it states the following. "The board believes the standard for students' behavior must be set cooperatively through interaction among the parents and other community representatives like the church, not people that are not stakeholders in our community, school administration, school employees, school volunteers, and students in the district, producing an atmosphere that encourages students to grow and self-discipline." I was very glad to see parents were the first stakeholders mentioned in this policy as it should be for all policies that affect our students and their children. The HIB provides 10 pages of protection. When I read Policy 5756, it's filled with definitions, terms, student-centered approaches, and a redundancy of the HIB policy. It was sad that the first time parents are mentioned is in the notification process of students who are choosing to be transgender. It even states, quote, "There is no affirmative duty for the school district staff member to notify a student's parents of the student's gender identity or expression." This is where the breakdown in the relationship building starts to fall apart when we keep parents out of some of, some or all of the important life changes of our children. As a community member, that actually has roots in the community and the church that I represent, along with many pastors, church members, parents, and children. I asked the board to repeal this policy. Madam President, board members, I told you last month that the church would stand with you to repeal that policy, so I'm going to ask the church to stand. We are here. But I, wait, 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 wait. I'd also like to say to our transgender, I'd also like to say to our transgender policy...
The following individual, Sarah Richards will be next.
I know my words fall on deaf ears, but I'm still going to say them. I'm Nico King, I'm an alumni from the class of 2018. I've lived in Violin like my whole life, but here I go. No one is teaching your children what opinion to have. No one. I went through school in this district, it is a public school. If you don't agree with what they're teaching in public school as a Christian, then send your kids to Catholic school or whatever denomination you're in, okay? You don't have to agree with any of this, and this goes even for the board. You don't have to agree with it, but if we're going to talk about the First Amendment of freedom of speech or whatever everyone's regurgitating, it doesn't hold because it's public school. If you want your kids to be taught Christian or Catholic or Jewish values, then send them to those schools. But if it's too expensive and you're getting upset about it, then stop, like, why are you complaining about sending them to public school where every literal denomination is? The topic of transgender identities being taught in schools is a myth. It's not in the curriculum. I was not taught being trans in high school. I had to Google it myself. I was not taught that, no one told me about it until I looked it up. In Child Developmental Psychology 101, I took that course, if your child does not trust you as your parent, they will struggle to trust anyone, and I have firsthand experience with that. I grew up strictly Catholic, and if we're talking about religion, in traditional Jewish teachings, people who were transgender, this goes way, way back before the Christian Bible was even made, you were holier than other people because you were closer to God, and you can tell me that's a lie, but it's not. And this isn't even about religion. Stop using kids as political tools to get what you want. We are your children. We are not bargaining chips. We're not, your kids, your babies are not bargaining chips, and you are using them as bargaining chips to do what? Make them not change even though they're going to change in college anyway? You're just teaching them not to trust you. That you shouldn't even want that, and you're making an environment where your children are going to think you are spying on you. I didn't even know this policy was in place until this year, and I went to school with it. Are you kidding me?
Benjamin Acasio is next.
Good afternoon, my name is Sarah Richards. I'm here today as a co-founder of an organization called True. True stands for Transgender Rights Understanding and Education. I am also a proud transgender woman and here today regarding Policy 5756, as all of our lovely people here today are. 5756 is a guiding document. It concerns, concerns over the recognition of transgender students' access to preferred changing rooms, bathrooms, and secure participation in relevant sports are already state law. Instead, this policy acts as guidelines for faculty to follow in order to ensure a transgender student is treated with respect, empathy, and concern to their well-being. Although members of this board have, sorry, although members of this board insist otherwise, 5756 is not infringe on so-called parents' rights. Nowhere in this policy is staff prevented from discussing the transgender status of a student with their parents. Instead, faculty are advised to take precautions in accordance with confidentiality and to coordinate with the students for their protections. If it is a matter of safety or necessity, the school has the option to notify parents. What 5756 is about is ensuring all students of VPS can feel safe and supported within their school. On January 10th, Mr. Rivera, you stated that he will not, that you will not allow individuals to be harassed, bullied, or discriminated against based on who they are or who they decide to be. If that is still the case, Mr. Rivera, then I regret to inform you by repealing this policy, your board sends a message of intimidation and harassment towards its own students. The policy outlines how to respect a student's gender identity while letting them be comfortable and protected. Repealing it under the guise of parents' rights is a smokescreen for the fact that members of this board do not wish to respect transgender students and does not value their safety as equally as other students. Policy 5756 ends with the following passage. "The board adopts this policy to help school and district administrators take steps to create an inclusive environment in which transgender and gender non-conforming students feel safe and supported." So please note that whoever amongst this board votes to repeal this policy is fundamentally in disagreement with that passage. And to me, if that does not send a clear message to the students of this school, that is, that to me would be harassment and intimidation from this school board.
Denise Hazelwood will follow.
Well, good evening, board members, Mr. Superintendent, public school staff members, and the community that's here today. My name is Benjamin Ocasio Jr. I live here in Violin. I also serve as an associate pastor for the Rocker Salvation Church. Some of our members are here today, and my children actually don't attend public school because we were ahead of the wave that we're seeing taking place in our society today. With that being said, I am opposing as well this policy 5756. It's amazing, you watch the news and you see television and you see so many meetings such as this, and you find yourself here today discussing these very issues, surprised that some of these things are even being discussed. As I looked over the, the policy that's here, I am in full agreement with what much has already been said about the necessity to protect the parents' rights of knowledge of whatever is taking place in their classroom, whatever identity expression is being revealed by the student. And I think that it is very key and important to, to oppose this. I stand with those members that have already opposed it, and I want to encourage them to not fear the taunts and so forth that you're hearing today, because I think as you can clearly see today, there are more that are with you than are against you. At the same time, I, I, I do understand and do agree wholeheartedly that no one in this community should be bullied, should go through any of that type of, absolutely not. As a Bible-believing Christian, that would go against what it is, I believe, right? As far as them being discriminated and dealing with bullying, but I do believe that a lot has been hyperbole that we've heard today. It's almost as if, if this policy does not go through, the suicide rate is going to, is going to exceed through the roof. And I think it's important to all of us to go home, do the homework ourselves, because numbers can be skewed in any way that you want. We do need to have protective measures, don't, don't misunderstand, but we do have to have protective measures, and maybe that's the areas of policy that need to be tightened up, but to, to go and adopt what appears to be just another part of this woke agenda that we're seeing throughout our country is not the way to go. Thank you very much.
Angelice Lilly Dutton will be next.
My name is Denise Hazelwood, I'm a Violin resident and taxpayer, and I have two children enrolled in the Violin School District since preschool. In my lifetime, I have come across only a handful of LGBTQ individuals that I know of. I have never found any of these people to be threatening or dangerous. On the other hand, let me tell you what I do find dangerous. This past November election, I Googled the names of every single candidate who was on the ballot for school board, every name. I wanted to know what sorts of policies they supported and what they didn't. All of the candidates were pretty much silent on their agendas. One spoke in a code that I understood, saying he was for parental rights, which I understood to be code for book banning, anti-inclusion, and things like that. So I did not vote for him and advised others not to vote for him either, and I was gratified to learn that he did not win. The rest of you kept your agenda secret until you got into office, so now with the proposed repeal of Policy 5756, your agenda is becoming clear. When you have to keep your agenda hidden so that you can get into power, that is something I find scary and dangerous. How can voters make an informed decision when the information is kept hidden? So that's dangerous. The group here tonight, New Jersey Project, is a New Jersey affiliate of Moms for Liberty. Their stance is anti-masking, anti-inclusion, anti-government, and anti-LGBTQ. So about Moms for Liberty, their main focus has been on manufacturing chaos in public schools. They work to block children across the country from learning about slavery, important figures like Martin Luther King Jr., and the existence of LGBTQ people. Its membership is rife with right-wing extremists and those accused of and/or guilty of criminal activity. Their founder, Bridget Ziegler, was embroiled in a sex scandal involving a three-way with her husband, Christian Ziegler, who was on the Moms for Liberty payroll. Ordinarily, I wouldn't care, that being between consenting adults, but in a separate incident, the other woman accused Christian Ziegler of rape. I would, I care because of the hypocritical messaging coming from that group. In immediate training for its members, Christian Ziegler instructed the group to "Never apologize ever" and added, "I think apologizing makes you weak." But in, but in Indiana chapter, was forced to apologize after it quoted Adolf Hitler on the front cover of a newsletter to its members. Some of their members have been known to associate with the Proud Boys... Ma'am, I need you to finish up, please. ...a violent, far-right group. They hold meetings in gun clubs and gun, and of... Five seconds. All right. That's the group, that's the type of people I find dangerous, not the LGBTQ community. Time's up, ma'am.
Vanessa Rasmussen.
I'm Angelice Dutton, I'm a student of Violin High, and I'm here to show my support for keeping this policy in place. I am fearful that the removal of this policy will lead to an increase in our trans students already feeling less support than they do. I have seen the violence and the loss against those students. I have witnessed so much hurt to them. I just want to minimize that, and I am only up here to share that very message. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just hope you all keep that in mind.
Radamas Morales will be next.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Rasmussen, I'm a teacher...
I'm a teacher at Vineland High School. I'm the English Department Chairperson there. I'm here in support of my students and my colleagues and to ask you to please keep in place policy 5756. I've heard a lot of wonderful rhetoric here tonight. I teach rhetoric as a part of AP Lang, and I just want to commend the students and my colleagues for their wonderful research and their wonderful presentation of their ideas. Please keep policy 5756 in place for the students' sake. Thank you.
Charles Moro will be next.
My name is Radamas Morales. I'm a citizen of Vineland, and I'm a child of God, and I could have stayed home, but I wanted to support my Christian brothers and sisters and put in our input on disapproving policy 5756. So I yield my time to anybody that has a prepared speech. I don't, but I came out to support my Christian brothers and sisters and my Lord and Savior.
After Mr. Morrell, Norahda Roman.
Thank you, Board, and whoever I should be thanking to be here. Thank you very much. I find it hard to believe that this is even an agenda. I'm a Christian. My name is Charles Moran. I live in Vineland. You know, what I'm hearing tonight is like it's a battlefield in school. I don't perceive that at all. Everyone deserves to be treated equally, no matter your race, your religion, your sex, or whatever. And I don't see anything other than that happening in our schools. I'm against this here, whatever number it is, I'm against it. You know, we live in a day, and I'm addressing you, the board member, and I appreciate you looking at me like I'm looking at you. You know, I was in church last night. It's hard for me to walk. I get out of breath walking to the next room. I pray for everyone here, because you are the ones that are going to make the decision, everyone here, and I believe some of you have children, some of you have grandchildren in school. I, I thank God my kids are out of school, but I have two grandkids in school in New Jersey. Excuse me. I could not imagine my eight-year-old boy getting a shower or getting undressed in front of a girl or a girl in front of the boy. It just ain't right. And wait till they get on the field in other sports. Somebody's really going to get hurt, injured, or seriously, or possibly killed. And then who's going to be responsible? You know, you're not the enemy. The people's not the enemy. The LGBTQ or whatever is not the enemy. We're all people. We're all human beings. We all have a right to live and be happy, and nobody, not you, not the government, has a right to take the parents' rights from their children. I don't care who you are. The parents, God gave them children to us, and we are responsible for them. When they become an adult, they have a right to do what they want. And I'm not, I'm not for no abuse or nothing like that. That's garbage. Nobody deserves to be abused, and that should be dealt with. But we have a right, and nobody has a right to, to train our child, to teach our child what they should do. You know, what happened when I was in school? Reading, writing, arithmetic. I graduated 16 years old, 11th and 12th the same, same year, 16 years old. And you got some programs in place where these children can graduate with a associate's degree? Let's teach them reading, writing, arithmetic. What you're there to do is teach, not indoctrinate. You're not there to indoctrinate. And please excuse me, I just naturally get loud. I'm not, I'm not mad, I'm not trying not to yell at you guys, I just, I get excited. I apologize.
Comments to an end?
Thank you so much, and I pray that you all search your conscience and make a decision, because God puts you all in government.
After Ms. Roman will be Melissa Tomlinson.
Hello, my name is Norahda Roman. I am a Vineland resident, and I do have children that attend the Vineland Public School. So the first thing that I want to open with is the transgender student guidance for the school district. I am opposed to 5756 policy. My reasonings are, the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, New Jersey SA 10-5-12, generally makes it unlawful for schools to subject individuals to differential treatments based on their race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, marital status, domestic partnerships, civil unions, sex, affectional sexual orientation, gender identification, or expression of disability. That is the law. Here are the areas that I do not agree with. On this guidance, on Section 2 for the Center Student Approach, it states that the school shall accept students' asserted gender identity. Parental consent is not required. Parental consent is required when a child goes to attend school, because we have to sign for them to go to school. When a child is going to be evaluated by a physician, a mental health specialist, or any other individual, they also need parental consent. The other section that I disagree with is in regards to the parents being in disagreement with a child. I believe that any individual should not be discriminated against, as your policy states for the bullying, that all children should be protected regardless of what they identify as, and putting this policy in place or continuing to put this policy in place not only allows children to receive information that is not shared with at home, but some children, including adolescents and high school students, have never seen other body parts besides their own gender. Now, I'm not against anyone identifying as anything else but what they identify as, but you have children that are going to be experiencing things that they have never seen before. Now, what happens when they come home and they don't know how to express to their parents? Today, I saw a penis, and I've never seen that before, and I feel really uncomfortable. Are you guys going to put places and plans for us parents to educate our children and comfort them at home for experiences that they have maybe felt awkward in or unnecessarily exposed to things that they're not taught at home? I plead that the board make this decision, and not based on anything else but the reasoning that what you guys stand for. We're here to educate the children, we're here to keep them safe. When I was in high school, we had transgender students that were there, and I have personally never, and if I have ever witnessed any student, regardless of their stature of identity or, or disability, learning intellectual problems, ever mistreated, I personally will stick up for them, because we're here for people. We're here to treat everyone equally regardless of their mental status or anything else. So thank you for giving me the time to share that with you today, and I hope that you guys come to an agreement and make this decision that you need to make for the students and the people. Thank you.
After Ms. Tomlinson, we'll hear Ariel Gonzalez.
Good evening again, members of the board. My name is Melissa Tomlinson. I'm an educator in the district next door at Buna. I am also the GSA advisor for the middle school, as well as a National Public School education advocate. We've had discussion about the discrimination laws in New Jersey, right? This policy does nothing more than give guidance on how to uphold those laws. You remove this policy the moment that you call home because somebody is identifying a gen, as a gender different than they were assigned at birth and wants to change their name, you better hope that you have on record that you have also called home for somebody who wants to change their name, such as myself did, Melissa, and I was called Mel in high school. So at that point, that phone call should have gone home, because Mel is typically a boy's name. We talk about gender ideologies and how all of a sudden we're being indoctrinating in schools, and yet, it's from at birth where a child discovers what their gender may or may not signify. They are dressed in pink clothes if they are a girl. They are given dolls to play with. At a certain age, they may experiment with makeup. You cannot keep gender ideology out of schools unless you first completely remove it from society, and quite honestly, some of us would be okay with that. You never know what's going on in a family. I literally, and I'm shaking over this still, I, I had to step out because I received a phone call. I was sent, somebody from another state was sent to me for advice. She, at birth, did not have a first name on her birth certificate, so there was something up with there with her sex at birth. She was abused as a child. She was forced into a marriage with a man who agreed to impregnate her so she would follow through with the belief that she was a woman through her adulthood. After she tried to escape, and this is, this is honestly no exaggeration, this was a literal phone call I just had, after she tried to escape, her family tracked her down, had her incarcerated, and experienced electroshock therapy because of what they felt and they believed was wrong for her own personal identification. One more point, I am not a religious person. We hear religion being tossed around in this room a lot tonight. We are in a public school building, so if we're going to speak about one religion, we're going to speak about all of them, and I will push every religion in. You want to open that door, be careful of what you ask for, including beliefs such as Wiccan texts, rituals, and practices. But if we are speaking about the Bible and we are speaking about-
I need to ask you to finish up, please. Time's up. Time's up, please.
There are several references in the Bible.
After Ariel Gonzalez, we'll hear Casey Russamon.
Good evening, Board. I am against this policy 5756, and I stand here, oh, sorry, my name is Ariel Gonzalez. I'm a man of God, I am a veteran to this country, and I am a father. I'm a father who was also a father in the foster care system, so I understand loving a child who is mine and who is also not mine. So I come from a loving perspective, and I heard many, many great arguments against policy 5756, and I was going to come and really hammer down on it, but honestly, I just want to encourage you, board members, to stand tall in a, in a time where people are swayed so easily. I really want to encourage you to stand tall on the issue, and I understand there's a lot of arguments that, you know, this policy is not going to take everything away, but it's a step in the right direction. And I, I implore you guys to really stand tall, stand firm, be a, as my fellow Christians know, immovable pillars, you know, be a, be a pillar of this community, don't be swayed and moved. Stand tall, stand tall on this policy, that we are against it as a community, that you can see the majority is against this policy, and I really do encourage you guys to really stand on your beliefs. And I thank you guys.
After Casey Russamon is Louis Russo.
Good evening. My name is Casey Russamon, and I'm a senior at Vineland High School. I am the treasurer for the class of 2024, National Honor Society President, and the VHS band drum major. One of Vineland's core traits I have had the joy of experiencing is the level of diversity Vineland has. In fact, our motto is diversity is our strength. We have something so unique about us that I firmly believe we should celebrate and be proud of. We have multiple different ways of doing so. We recently had our annual African-American read-in, which is a huge success every year. In our media center, we celebrate multiple cultural groups, as well as disease, disability, and gender awareness through exhibits and book displays. During the holiday season, our Puerto Rican students get to share the tradition of palanda to celebrate the Christmas season. All being said, I think one of our diverse groups is in danger right now. Myself and many other students at the high school are in full support of our LGBTQIA+ plus students. I understand there are concerns on what happens during the school day, as parents are not with their child during this time, but hearing this policy being up for debate is quite painful. Vineland High School is a place some of our students come to to escape their life outside. Students who are affected directly by this repeal of the policy would not have access to the same resources as other students. During my time at VHS, I have been exposed to many different people. My fellow class officers are some of the most hardworking people I know, and I'd like to mention we are an all-female office, something we don't get to see very often. Being the leader of a band like Vineland High School is such a privilege, as my fellow musicians and my directors are people I will remember for the rest of my life. We are all so different, yet we all feel so safe because we find comfort in our differences. You say you pride yourself on diversity, but one of our most diverse groups is being targeted. It is no secret that many of the students in the Vineland District are aware of this issue. We know our school better than anyone, and administrators, I'd love for you to spend the day at Vineland High School or any of the middle or elementary schools in a similar way, as our AMSA students have been shadowing VHS students in preparation for their new school year at the 910 and 1112 building. I think having administrators shadow a student would be extremely beneficial. Our notion of school and how children are experiencing it is not completely accurate, and to fix that, I want you to spend seven and a half hours with us. We'll be waiting. Thank you.
After Mr. Russo, we'll hear Tina Lofton.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. In speaking in reference to 5756, my name is Lou Russo. I'm the president of the Vineland Education Association. I appreciate some of the feedback that I've gotten on why we have reached this point. I respect your perspectives, I, I respect your opinions, but I often now wonder, as I hear what is being discussed tonight, if we thought further down the road about the Pandora's Box that we have opened up and the political theater that we've now created. I don't know that anyone wanted to drive a wedge in our community, but I think that's what now this policy revocation is now doing. Schools should never be a place of division. Schools are supposed to be a place of unity, where the community comes together in the best interest of its children and of its community and of their future and of our city's future. So please consider that before you vote or consider anything that removes the policy. But if you do, I want you to be aware of the labor perspective. A school board policy cannot be alien or contrary to the law. The law supersedes any board policy. Federal law, and that's the Civil Rights Act, state law, the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, is going to rise above any board policy, and our members in the VEA, be they teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, child study team members, anyone who comes into contact with kids, we are obligated to follow the law. So nothing will change if you revoke this policy. The same procedures have to stay in place. If you create a policy contrary to the law, and I really hope that you do not, now you're putting my members and, and our association in a very unique and awkward place. We can't obey your policy and violate the law, and the law will supersede policy all the time. I want to remind board members and the community, if necessary, that there is no curriculum, there is no course that teaches gender identity, that indoctrinates kids, or does any sort of, all of the other nonsense that we've heard. It's a complete mischaracterization. A public school has to welcome everyone who arrives at our door, and they arrive at our door with the problems and the issues that the community and their families have often created. Three quarters of the day are spent at home, only one quarter of the day is spent at school. And we have to realize that the only way that a school would not communicate with any parent about any problem is if in this small situation, a child identifies that he'll be placed into harm at home if this becomes knowledge. And the real question then that we have to ask is why are children afraid of their parents? Thank you.
After Ms. Lofton, we'll hear anonymous safety reasons.
Okay, all right. My name is Tina Lofton. I have, I'm a teacher in the district for over almost 30 years. I also have three children that attend Vineland Public Schools. I have another child who graduated in 2020 from VHS. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to express my support for policy 5756. My husband and I strive to maintain a household that is not only accepting but encouraging of all people, regardless of race, gender, religion, sexual- regardless of race, gender, religion, sexuality, economic status, et cetera. Even with this environment of acceptance, our child was uncomfortable telling us that he was transgender. And it's no wonder why. A recent survey found that when coming out as trans, 40% of the children received no support from their families. 10% suffered from domestic violence, and 15% were kicked out of their home. That means only 35% of the children who came out did so in a supportive environment. So let's not forget that the transgender community is subject to violence, harassment, suicide, and last year, over 30 murders in the United States alone. But thanks to policy 5756, our child was able to confide in a trusted teacher. This teacher maintained his ameninity, excuse me, and they also helped connect him to another student that was transgender. Shortly thereafter, our child was comfortable enough coming to us when he was ready. And it hasn't been easy. We remain supportive. There are other family members who continue to intentionally misgender and deadname him, which causes anxiety, stress, and a feeling of being marginalized. But let me be clear, that does not happen in the Vineland Public Schools, thanks to policy 5756. There is a real effort to provide a safe and supportive environment. And I will forever be grateful to this teacher. And I'm grateful for this school board who adopted this policy in the first place. We should all be here for one reason, for our children. And I urge you to continue to support policy 5756 because it helped our child, it helped our family. And I know we're not alone. And if it helps one child, like just one child, then it's your responsibility to uphold the policy.
The next speaker will be April Kinder.
Hello, Board members. Hello, Vineland. I have refrained from giving my name because I am a trans person who, quite frankly, is terrified to even speak here today. But I wanted to put myself up here as what I call an elder trans so that people can see me, know my experience, and just give you some insight that you might not have. So thank you for letting me speak today. And I am somebody who grew up here, was born and raised here. I went to Becky and Andy preschool, East Vineland kindergarten, Windsor Elementary, Veterans Memorial Middle School, and then Vineland High School. I played soccer, softball, did a whole lot of things with the community, was part of the Gabriel Project, did a lot of stuff. And throughout that whole time, there was no class, no instruction on anything LGBTQIA+. It was simply things I experienced and didn't understand. No one had an explanation for it. I learned it all myself, little by little, piece by piece, just like probably most of the people in this room. Nobody told me to be one way or another. I was raised in a house full of women. I was born assigned female as birth. I had no reason to feel the need to transition. I was raised Catholic. All of my years in school, went to CCD from as little as you can to my graduating year. And, you know, through all of that, I'm still like I am today. I did not know about this policy until very recently, but I do think that it is important to uphold it because the number one rule in the queer community is to never out anyone. It is unfair. I understand that parents are concerned. As somebody who is older, I do not have children, but I understand the love and appreciation that you give your kids. You know, when you name them, that is one of the greatest gestures of love that you can do. However, if a child does not feel like they fit in the body in the gender that they were assigned as birth, that's a really important thing and something to work through. And my mom was my best friend growing up, but I still didn't tell her a whole lot of stuff. But she was really supportive, so there was no reason for me to be secretive, yet all the same. But one thing I really want to push and make sure everybody understands is that your genitalia and your sex is not your gender, and who you love is not your gender identity. So, thank you.
After Ms. Kinder, we'll hear Colette Johnson.
Hello, my name is April Stevenson Kinder. I'm a teacher, a community member, a volunteer, a parent, a daughter, sister. I'm all of those things. And I know there are so many people that are here that wear so many different hats. And I'm so glad to see you guys here, that you cared enough to come out to this board meeting and to be part of this process. And I commend you for it. I am here, just to put a little different spin on this, we already know that we're here for our students. We all know that we are here to educate and be a support for the students that are hopefully going to graduate and become productive members who will volunteer in their lifetime. I know that I come from a family who has produced many Vineland graduates. My mother was a graduate of 1958. My son was a graduate of 2019. I have a host of cousins, aunts, uncles who have been in the Vineland School District. I am proud to say I have been a teacher for 19 years at the Vineland High School, and I have seen students who have had all types of personalities. And I'm very, very, very happy that I am part of just some of their time that they spent at that school. One thing I do want to say is that this policy gives us a clear decision on how to treat our students. And I have seen the parents' rights. And I'm a parent, I want my rights. But I don't have to have you give me my rights. I will fight for my rights as a parent. I will talk to my son. I will make sure that I am part of his life in every way that I can. And I will make sure that when I have my grandchildren, I will be part of their lives. Nobody has to give me that right because I will take that right. And I will defend that right. And yes, I am also a Christian, and I believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. And I work, worship, and I teach, and I volunteer in Vineland. No one has to give me the right to be that person who is going to take my rights the way that I believe. But what I'm scared of, not that we're saying that we're not going to have this for our students or that we are not going to tell our parents, what I'm scared of is if this policy doesn't happen, how do I make that decision on what parents to tell? If we leave it up to professionals, then who will make that decision? Thank you for giving me this time.
After Ms. Johnson, we'll hear Jay Everett.
Good evening. My name is Colette Johnson. Thank you all for letting me be here to speak. I work at Bissetti Photo in Buena, but I am here on behalf of the Unitarian Universalist Faith Action Committee of New Jersey. As a person of faith and member of the Unitarian Universalist Church and a child of God, I am here to voice our collective support for policy 5756. There is nothing in the Bible that says being transgender is a sin. I stand in solidarity with people of diverse backgrounds, faiths, and affiliations who all agree that we need to ensure our children's safety, emotional and physical well-being. Eliminating policy 5756 will remove a crucial safety net from transgender students. Retaining the policy protects the taxpayers of your district from lawsuits, which would divert taxpayer dollars designated for teaching children and divert it to paying lawyers. The transgender youth in New Jersey have been speaking out about how vitally important it is to come out on their own terms. A 16-year-old New Jersey transgender youth stated, "If kids were willing to tell their parents and not be worried about it, they would. If there's a reason to be worried about it, I don't think the parents should be told out of the blue and possibly have that kid be mentally or physically hurt." So 10 years ago, it was recognized that this policy was necessary to protect the transgender youth of our community. Contrary to some of the current rhetoric surrounding this policy, there have been no reported or proven negative effects from this policy since it was issued. In fact, this policy provides teachers and other school personnel with the guidelines they need to support students and, according to the Vineland Board of Education website, "foster the holistic development of each student." There is nothing in policy 5756 that prohibits schools from notifying a parent if the student has given permission. As good parents, you would want to know if your children came out. And that's why we're all arguing, because they're good parents. Good parents want to know so they are able to provide love, support, and the resources necessary to live a healthy life. This policy isn't for good parents. This policy protects children who don't have parents like you. These children are at risk and are vulnerable to abuse, physical, psychological, and sexual abuse. Transgender youth have the highest rate of suicide, and you can be responsible for literally saving the lives of children. Thank you.
After Ms. Everett, we'll hear Tony Cotto.
Good evening. I am Jay Everett, a student in Vineland High School, class of 2027. And I would like to speak about why the policy 5756 is important and should be kept in place. It helps students at school feel safe in their environment and comfortable being who they are in a public environment. It is important to all students everywhere that their privacy is respected and protected, even with their parents. It makes students feel safe going to a trusted adult at school about problems or situations that are going on in their lives. And not everyone comes from a supportive background, and being outed could seriously put them in danger. So I believe that policy 5756 should be kept in place for the safety, comfortability, rights, and privacy of students. Thank you for your time.
After Mr. Cotto, we'll have Genesis Salas.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, thank you so much for the opportunity to share my heart with you this evening. My name is Tony Cotto. I live here in the city of Vineland, and I have the privilege of pastoring Chestnut Assembly of God and been there for over 20 years. I am a married man with four children and six grandchildren. Very proud to say that. I have read through this policy over and over again. And my approach, and our approach in the Christian community, is never to bash anyone. In fact, we're very compassionate. We love people. We care for people. We care for your children, my children, and anyone else who is going through a process or struggling because no one is perfect, and so we all have our struggles. However, and we believe in protecting children in the school system. Every child should have the opportunity to have an education that is stable, secure, and safe, but never at the expense of the parent not knowing what is happening in the school system. That is not acceptable and should never, never be allowed. And I'll just read just a couple things. I know that my time is limited. But it says in the policy that there is no affirmative duty for any school district personnel to notify a student's parent or guardian of the student's gender identity or expression. We heard a lot of things tonight that parents are not, that things are not being kept from parents. That is totally untrue. These things are being kept from parents. Parents have the right to know what's happening in the school system with their child. If I'm expected to take care of my child, feed my child, clothe my child, house my child, educate my child, then I also have the right as a parent and a grandparent to know what is happening in the school district. One of the interesting things is that the school district or the teachers or the school system, they're not responsible to tell the parent about what's going on with their child, only if they're being harassed. Once they're being harassed, then they can include the parent in that process. I think that's a little bit late. Don't you think that's a little late to include parents in that process? Some of the other things that I just want to mention very quickly is this, is that why are the parents becoming the enemy? Why are we using this to weaponize against parents? We have the God-given right to steward our children. It's not your responsibility to educate our children. And it's not your responsibility-- I'm sorry, it is your responsibility to educate our children, not indoctrinate our children or to keep what's happening in the school system away from parents' knowledge. Just know that we pray for you, and know this one thing. We will all stand before a holy God with every decision that we've ever made. Thank you.
After Ms. Salas, we'll hear from Adrian Pacenti.
Good afternoon. I am Genesis Salas. I attend Vineland High School, and I'm proud to say I'm a Pentecostal Christian. And I attend Vineland Spanish Pentecostal Assemblies of God, and my pastor is here. I know that, and I know in the beginning, God created man and women in His image. And how would you like it if someone disrespected your masterpiece? Because you are God's masterpiece. I have many friends that have depression, overthinking, confusion, identity crisis, and we care for you. Most of them don't know who they are. Parents and their children. I can't imagine not telling my parents something. I have to always tell my mom something because I know she wants what's best for me. But I know not everyone can go up to their parent. But they should focus on building families, strong families, because I know at my church, we're focusing on building families. And if you really worry about the children and their mental health, you should help them, not bring division with their parents. And I'm against policy 5657, and I stand with God and with the cross I carry around my neck. Thank you, and God bless you all.
After Ms. Pacenti, we'll hear from Andrew Brous.
Adrian Pacenti, I live in Vineland in the great United States of America. As a woman of common sense, I ask you to use your common sense and repeal the New Jersey transgender policy 5756. Provided to us by New Jersey Governor Murphy and the State Commission of Education, this policy offers a list of guidelines, not a law, a list of guidelines intended to assist New Jersey school districts in making the best decisions for the benefit of the entire student body. Guidelines, the operative word. There is no state mandate that calls for you to enact this K-12 policy. Our public schools are now telling our children not to trust their parent or guardian if they will not affirm the child's new and often school-encouraged gender identity. For a child to live radically different at home and at school and to conceal what-- For a child to live radically different at home and at school and to conceal what he or she perceives to be his or her true identity from the parent guardian is psychologically Parental rights are undermined when public school employees withhold information from them about their child and when the child is encouraged to withhold information from his or her parent guardian. School employees who withhold critical information on our children are contributing to the chipping away of parental responsibility. Parents are held accountable for their child's actions in a court of law, yet ironically, school employees can keep secret the child's actions regarding sexuality. In New Jersey and across our nation, school officials are being held legally accountable for their efforts to hide information from parents and guardians as parental rights are openly defied.
I have time, stop.
The following, following Mr. Brous will be Genesis Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, my handwriting is terrible. My last name is Brown. Good evening. My name is Andrew Brown, and I'm a clinical social worker licensed to practice in the state of New Jersey. I'm a lifelong Vineland resident. I am here tonight to request that you vote to keep Policy 5756, which protects the rights of transgender students. I want to state unequivocally that I support equal rights for transgender adults, adolescents, and children. Repealing this policy could cause real harm to students, as I detailed in the letter that I sent to each board member and to the superintendent earlier this week. Policy 5756 is a thoughtfully-written policy that has seemed to work for the past nine years. It is hard for me to understand the motivation behind wanting to repeal a policy which is working. However, as a student of history, I am aware that oppressed and marginalized groups of people have been victims of inequality, discrimination, and hatred. In my lifetime, blacks, Jews, Asians, Hispanics, gays have all been treated unfairly and sometimes even worse. In my parents' lifetime, add Italians, Irish, and Germans to that list. Reading posts on social media and listening to uninformed people talk, I realize that transgender people are now the main victims of this kind of hurtful treatment. Our school board is in a, is in a position tonight to vote to ensure that transgender students retain their rights, and I believe each and every one of you are listening intently, and you will make the decision that you think is best. And I, I thank you for listening to all of these opinions, even ones that run contrary to mine, and I thank you for your time. You have the, you're, you're going to vote on this, and not unlike the seven Supreme Court justices who voted for the majority in the Dred Scott decision in 1857, voting to repeal this policy puts you on the wrong side of history. However, voting to keep this policy keeps you on the right side of humanity. Thank you very much for listening.
After Ms. Gonzalez, we'll hear from Carrie Weber.
Good evening. My name is Genesis Gonzalez, and I am currently a student in the Vineland Public Schools. I'm here to ask you to repeal Policy 5756. I'm here, I'm here with the utmost respect for everyone present, but I am not in favor of Policy 5756. As a member of a household that faithfully believes in unity, trust, and respect, it is important for me to raise my voice and not remain silent in the face of a policy that goes against the fundamental principles of a healthy family. Communication, respect, trust, commitment, and acceptance of a family is essential for a person's development and success. No child should have to feel safe for the right to remain silent. We do not fight war with violence but with peace. We do not fight hate with anger but with love. We do not combat the safety of children in schools by taking away the right of parents to know what is going on with their children. I understand that not all students have a parent to open up to, but that does not mean you take away the right of parents to know what is going on with their children. School is supposed to keep all students safe and teach them to ensure them a better future. Every student should be protected equally, but with this policy, we are not all being If you want to protect the rights of a certain group of students, you should also want to protect the rights of all students. A group of students may feel safe with this policy, but that does not mean all students will feel safe with this policy. Everyone is so concerned about how a certain group of students feel attending school, using the bathroom, and undressing in a locker room, but what about the rest of the students? I do not think it's fair that a group of students' concerns are being addressed more than the concerns that other students have. I personally would not feel safe or comfortable undressing or using the bathroom with someone who is not biologically female. I decided to use my voice today, not only to speak up for myself, but also for all the other students who share my concerns but who are afraid to use their voice. Thank you for listening. I appreciate you for giving me the time to speak tonight. I ask you to repeal Policy 5756. Thank you.
After Ms. Weber, we'll have Julie Lopez.
I just want to make sure there is actually no Carrie Weber, because I'm Cindy Weber. Fair?
Corey Weber?
It, it could be Corey, yep.
Uh-uh, okay. I apologize.
If you'll just give me one moment, I'm just pulling up my argument that I have regarding Hello, my name is Corey Weber. Today I'm meant to write a notepad document. Today I'm meant to write a notepad document, something else, but I decided to wing it because I believe in the support of Policy 5756, because as many people have said, this policy takes, because as mu, as many people have said, this policy takes away their rights. But the thing is, the same, is the same thing as previous people said, that there could be some compromises. In my past school life, I've always been bullied because of my disabilities, and directly resulting from that, I became an introvert. But as the year went on, I found friends, and I got to know them more, and I found out about their GSA club, and you know what? It didn't change a thing. Not a single thing. And children are still the same, no matter what they wear, what they're called, what they prefer to be called. We're all human. We're, we're still the same, no matter what, and we, we are, but parents are, but parents are part, part of the problem. Students rely on them for food, shelter, clothes, a roof, a roof over their head. What happens to the student, when the students come out to their parents? I'll leave that up to you, to you board members to decide. Thank you for your time.
Cindy Weber. Next on deck is Stephen Soloff.
Hi, my name is Cindy Weber, and while I hold the experience of countless families in my head and my heart tonight while I'm speaking, I'll be focusing on myself and my child who attends school here in Vineland. Tonight, you'll be asked to renew the Policy 5756. I'm encouraging you to do so. Those who challenge 5756 will tell you that it's about parents' rights. It's about students' safety. Children hold very little control in their lives. They're wholly dependent on their families for their basic needs, for food, for shelter, for love, for guidance. While you as board members may not be able to comprehend parents and families who may disown their children, trust me, they exist. I'm a child who was raised in a home with conditional love. I knew rather young that my parents didn't love me, and I had to create my own family. I've sat across from dozens of youth facing homelessness after their parents have found out that they were gay or transgender, or they just didn't agree with a choice that they made. Youth asking their parents, youth asking anyone who would listen, why they, why they don't love them, why, why they're able to throw them away. Removing guidance that ensures basic safety from children and youth during some of the worst mental health shortages in this country is not only short-sighted, it's cruel. I stand here and, I stand here from firsthand knowledge to tell you exactly how backed-up perform care is. There are hundreds of children waiting in this area for services. That number is only going to rise. Removing Policy 5756 is basic kindness that amounts to suicide prevention. As a parent, I watch my child go from introverted and scared to be at school, yes, scared, and mostly solo, to joining the GSA and being accepted for who he is. He's found his community. The policies that protect transgender students in this district protect other students too. The folks that join that GSA who attend regularly are some of the most forgiving and beautiful people, and right now, they're scared for their basic safety. My son's bloomed into a bubbly, friendly senior who just tonight was recognized and welcomed by other students that he met because of the supports put in place for 5756. The impacts of removing this policy will be felt by many far beyond those brave students who spoke tonight. Anyone who knows me knows that I stand on-
I need to ask you to finish times.
Absolutely. If you're truly interested in making change, have some listening sessions. Involve parents, students, and the district.
After Mr. Soloff, we'll hear Joe Miller.
Hi, my name is Steve Soloff. I'm from Vineland. While I support protecting the rights of all people and students, there are things in Policy 5756 that may just need to be redesigned and reworded, such as, the policy has no clear definition of gender. So if we are talking about transgender students and we have no idea what gender A and gender B is, then how do we identify what the transition is? And that is specifically important because how do we implement this policy if we are not clear on what is actually happening? Likewise, the policy is about anti-discrimination. I did not read in the policy anything specifically about how students are informing the teachers and the school district that they are transgender. Well, if that procedure happens multiple different ways, then we are inherently giving different treatment to different students. Then, the policy states that the schools are required to provide a safe environment while going through a transition process. Well, in the policy, it does provide a definition for transition, which includes hormone treatment and surgery. Are the schools aware that kids are going through transition processes that include hormone treatments and surgeries and not informing the parents? Next, uh, schools are required to be inclusive and not bully or prevent bullying to trans students. Well, if the schools are not required to inform the parents of transgender students that they are transgender, then how would the parents know that the policies are being implemented properly? Then the policy states, if there is no threshold for verifying a student is trans or transitioning, how is it fair for activities such as school sports to have biological males competing against biological females? And finally, the policy implies that the school can delay informing the parents up until what I perceive to be the last possible moment before a crisis situation happens. Well, how would a supportive parent of a transgender student help prevent bullying of transgender kids if they're not even aware that their kids are transgender?
After Joe Miller, we're from Stephanie Anonymous.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, board. My name is Joe Miller. I'm a city councilperson in Woodbury, New Jersey. I'm South Jersey's only out transgender elected official. Not going to pretend, oh, thanks. You can clap more when we have more of us. I'm not going to pretend that I know your constituency better than you. All I'm going to talk about is the fact that I graduated high school in 2014, right when this policy was passed, and I know that at the time, there were about three of us that were out in my graduating class. What I've seen tonight is a bunch of kids that are happy as themselves and are able to come up here and talk to you, which is not something I ever would have been able to do at their age. You know, when you are closeted and you're in school, it's like you're walking around with a sheet on your head, a ghost to everybody, especially yourself. Since 2014, I've had about twenty of my classmates come out in addition to me. Now, nothing changed since then. We just were allowed to become ourselves once we got out of school. The reality of it is, this policy, I don't know. I don't know if it actually helps. What I do know is that there's been a sizable difference in the fact that kids feel more comfortable being themselves and that kids are able to actually come up here and advocate for themselves. You know, I wasn't actually happy since middle school when, until I was 26, because I was never out. I spent my entire life trying to be the golden, the golden boy for my, my parents. I was an Eagle Scout leader in my troop. I was a, on the safety patrol. I did everything I could to prove that I was the kind of son that they wanted, trying to live up to my dad's name that he gave me. I was the fourth. Trying to tell my parents that I wanted to change my name was hard at 26. Can't imagine what it's like at 16, because I never had the support at my school to be able to talk to my teachers that I trusted, because I didn't know that I would be safe doing so. And last thing I just want to leave you all with. And last thing I just want to leave you all with, it doesn't matter how you vote on this today, it's going to get better for kids because these kids out here are incredible. They're out here and I am incredibly proud of them. And when I finally was able to tell my parents that they had a daughter instead of a son, they gave me this bracelet that I carry around that says "daughter" in Morse code. Things get better and I hope you'll do the right thing to help support those kids, but I'll leave it up to you. Thank you.
After Stephanie, we can hear from Eileen Bosco.
My name is Stephanie. I'm a proud mom of a transgender student at one time. She graduated in 2014, wherever you are. You know, I hear a lot of words tonight. What I want to talk about is how many kids are we really talking about? How many? Okay, so let's look. In 2022, UCLA Law School put out a report saying that in the general population of people 13 years and older, 0.6 of that population will identify as transgender. What we find further breaking that down is that only 0.5% of people over the age of 18 identify that way. And yet, kids in the age of 13 to 17, it's 1.4%. Let's put that in numbers. Let's talk about Vineland High, 2,693 students. If you look at 1.4% that are going to be confused, that's 38 students. All right, 14 of those 38 will continue their life as a transgender individual, but 24 won't. 24 of those kids that are going to come to you will not continue this process. So let's talk about those 24 families. Okay, what is going to happen to that family when you make that phone call and say Stevie wants to be Shelley? Okay, what happens to that family? When you ask those kids, why don't you want to tell your parents? Most of them will tell you, because it's going to crush them. I don't want to break their heart. I can't even tell my dad I got a C in math. And now I'm going to tell him I'm going to be a girl? Okay, they don't want to crush them and they're right. Because as a parent who did this, I want to tell you what happens to that family. You start to question everything. You're fearful. You're embarrassed. You're embarrassed of your own kid. You start to, when you try to tell other family members, all of a sudden, you're not invited to Thanksgiving dinner. This crushes an entire family, not just the student. It changes everything. The ensuing depression, if you're one of those 14 families, is unbearable. I was given a choice. I could bury my son or love my daughter. I chose to love my daughter. 10 years late, 7 years. I buried my husband.
After Ms. Bosco. After Ms. Bosco, Stephanie Engel.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Bosco, Cape May Courthouse, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of policy 5756. As many of you know, I grew up in Vineland, graduated from Vineland High School. I'm a retired educator of 32 years and was the founder of the GSA at the high school. What you may not know is I am a single parent of a 15-year-old and a gay woman. I founded the GSA to hopefully give students a safe place to go as a means of support. I know all too well what it was like for me during those years. During my times as the advisor, I spoke with many students about their fears of not being able to discuss their truth. I always stressed to them the importance of making informed, educated decisions. When discussing their home environment, I always reminded them that their parents loved them and wanted the best for them. I encouraged them to talk to their parents, to be respectful to others' opinions, and to be true to themselves, all while making sure they were kept safe. Policy 5756 does this very same thing. Many will say it is an attempt for educators to keep things from parents, but it is not. I see it as a way of helping to bridge the gap between these very difficult discussions we need to have. My greatest fear is that doing away with this policy will eliminate any safe place our students feel they have to go. I myself have faced the desperation and pain and hopelessness that comes with discovering who I was. As a parent, I can tell you, if faced with the choice of having my daughter talk to someone at school or no one at all, I would always encourage her to seek the guidance of her school family if she isn't comfortable speaking to me. I ask tonight that you make an informed, educated decision when deciding whether to keep policy 5756. I ask that you remember the needs of all our students and that you take the time that is needed to sit with all the stakeholders and discuss what best services our school community. Thank you.
After Ms. Engel, we'll hear from Luz Vasquez.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Mizony Engel. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm the anti-bullying specialist. And for the last 17 years, I've had the honor of advocating for the students of Vineland. As a school social worker, I implore you not to repeal policy 5756. Over the last two months, concerns have been raised, most prominently about parental rights. I would like to explain to you what could happen based in research as to how this could affect the students we are here to serve. The biggest misconception that I hear is that school personnel are keeping information from parents, being deceitful. That is not the case. Rather, what we are doing is working with students to come out on their own terms. That is important because outing anyone can be detrimental. The National Institute of Health tells us that transgendered youth's involvement in risky behavior and trauma is much higher than cisgendered youth. They are poorly understood, experience higher rates of depression, health disparities, lower GPAs, homelessness, poor attendance, and lower rates of college enrollment. But most importantly, 61% have reported suicidal thoughts and 1 in 3 have actually attempted suicide. What saves these youth is having what we call protective factors, one of which is supportive people, like some school personnel, in their lives that help ensure for better outcomes. Repealing this policy will undoubtedly put an end to this for all of our students. Outing a person without their consent has traumatic outcomes and can lead to someone experiencing violence. It is imperative that we do not take students' stories into our own hands. We must be respectful of things like timing and find appropriate supports to ensure that students have the resources they need. In this district, we promote social emotional learning based on empathy and acceptance. However, we are doing the exact opposite as the adults that should be modeling these behaviors. We could potentially be taking away an extra layer of protection for our students and for our staff as they will no longer have a policy to protect them. We will be opened up to litigation, loss of funding, and the potential risk of suicide while setting a precedence that every student is at risk of losing their expectation to privacy. I can't help but wonder if the concerns surrounding this policy are based in a difficulty understanding-
Time's up, please.
Thank you.
Keian Myers will come up next. After Luz Vasquez.
Vasquez, resident of Vineland, taxpayer. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening regarding policy 5756. As a person of faith and a parent of four that raised all her children here in the Vineland District, I stand here and as a community leader as well, I'm not against any group or individual. What I am in support of is parents being notified of any changes, minor and major, concerning their children while they're in school. While there may be disagreements or major philosophical differences of our value systems here tonight, we should remain respectful of those differences and not refer to parents that are here that truly live these convictions out as pure political theater. I can assure you, there's nothing theater about personal convictions that we as parents have the right to determine what is best for our children. I can assure you, it's not based on our political affiliation either. We're families. We value as parents over our families. We value the right to raise our children according to our values. And we ask that you as board members also honor that and I commend you. I support you. I thank those that are bold enough to take a stand for families. And trust me, we voted you in for a reason and I thank you for taking that stand. We stand with you tonight. Thank you.
After Keian Myers, we hear from Valerie Gross.
Good evening. My name is Keian Myers. Today, I'll be addressing policy 5756. I attend Vineland High School and I am the treasurer for the class of 2026. I am also transgender, so this change of repealing the policy would have affected me. Repealing policy 5756 would be incredibly harmful to your students in your schools. Getting rid of this policy allows school staff the right to out students to their parents. The term outing, for those of you who don't know, means informing people of a queer person's sexual orientation or new gender identity without them wanting you to do so. Coming out to someone, especially family and friends, can be very difficult for someone and forcing someone to come out can negatively affect them. These are the students you are supposed to care about and keep safe. By getting rid of this policy, you will in turn create a space that allows for the harm and mistreatment of trans youth in your schools. You will allow teachers who are there to teach to out their students to their parents over a name change. By allowing this, you will also be allowing other students to gain a mindset that outing someone is okay. Outing can lead to violence, poor mental health, and trauma. Even if you believe it won't have harmful effects, it will. Allowing the outing of students can also have negative effects on home life. Parents could react negatively to the news and kick their children out, hurt them, or worse. Things like that have happened multiple times before and your students are not immune to that same behavior. Even if there aren't many of us, it's still your job to protect us. As a trans student myself, it has greatly helped me to not have to worry about a teacher telling my parents that I was trans. I was able to come out to my parents when I was ready. I wish for all other trans students in Vineland Public Schools to be able to feel safe telling their teachers these things and have someone address them correctly. Coming out should be a queer person's choice, not yours, not a teacher's, not another student's, just theirs. You are supposed to keep these students safe. However, what you want to do is the opposite. Thank you.
Valerie Gross. Amens Watson. Following Ms. Watson, we'll have Elise Watson.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, residents of Vineland. My name is Amaris Watson. I'm a resident of the city of Vineland. I was an ER nurse here at InSpeer Vineland for six years. I'm a mother baby nurse. I take care of your children. I take care of your emergencies, or rather, I took care of them. I would also like to express dissent for the policy 5756 on the basis that it supports a cultural delusion that I believe we find ourselves in as Americans right now and I'm prepared to give you an argument. So in regard to delusion, transgender ideology is logically inconsistent. The Oxford Language Dictionary defines delusion as a false belief or judgment about external reality held despite incontrovertible evidence to the contrary. Biology, science, has revealed that there are two sexes based on chromosomal pairing at conception. XX pairing is a female child, XY is a male child. These genders, please, I want them to hear me. These genders are markedly different in makeup from hormonal makeup, muscle and fat percentages, reproduction organs, to name a few. Written into each person's DNA is their chromosomal pairing, meaning before any of us are born and long after a person's dead, written all over their body and in their body, is that they are male or female. Research from the National Library of Medicine asserts that each person normally has one pair of sex chromosomes on each of their cells. We are each multi-trillion-celled organisms. That's how many times it's written on me that I'm a woman. That's how many times it's written on all of us what we are at birth, regardless of how you feel, regardless of what you're experiencing. This is a delusion and I'm here to speak the truth. These are facts that science have revealed. I'm not even talking about religion. My faith didn't tell me this. The science books told me this. The study of the natural, the material world through observation, research, and experiment, these facts are then endorsed by reality. If you look at me, you see a brown woman. My anatomy suggests I'm a woman. You can see this color. Tell me you can't. I'm brown. The reality, reality is not just what we perceive, it is what we experience. And in the transgender ideology, reality is in conflict with experience, which means that it's not actually science, it's spiritual. You've exited science when you're beginning to argue based off your personal experience and you've entered the realm of philosophy. And in philosophy, there is religion and I could, Jesus. It's spiritual. Once you exit science, once we exit the facts of the experienced reality, we have entered the spirit realm. And I believe in the spirit realm. I'm a Christian. My God, you can't see Him. Oh, but He's real. Oh, He's real. And I believe He created me. I believe He created you and my Bible is consistent with this reality because it says male and female.
Ma'am, I need you to, thank you.
After Elise Watson, we'll hear from Natalie Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elise Watson. I'm a teacher in the community and I am here to express my dissent of policy 5756. My biggest concern when reading the policy, as others have expressed tonight, was how it does seem to leave parents on the outside of what is occurring with their children in school. And as a teacher, there is a responsibility that I do hold to the children when I am there with them, but at the end of the day, I'm not a parent to those babies that are in my care. And as much as I love them, the responsibility and the ultimate decisions of their life are in the care of their parents. So even out of respect for the students in our care that we love and we desire to honor and protect, I'm not their parent at the end of the day. So I have to give respect and honor where it's due. But with this policy being open, I do see the connection of what it might bring and open the door to with further transgender curriculum coming down the pike into school districts. So if we permit the exiling of parents in terms of having permission to be a part of their students' lives, what are we also agreeing to as we walk through this? And that's all I have to say, so thank you for your time.
After Ms. Rivera, we'll hear from Heather McGarvey.
Good evening, Natalie Rivera, and I'm from Logan Township, and I'm here to support everybody from Vineland and all over New Jersey. I'm going to say no to 5756. I'm going to be a little harsh, I'm going to give you a hell no for 5756. I want, this thing I'm going to say will solve the issue, it'll solve the issue. Genesis 1:27. So God created man in his own image. In the image of God created he/him. Male and female created he/them. That's all you need to know, let it ring out in Vineland today. And let the influence of the Holy Spirit reign in this room tonight. Because God's influence is greater than any influence. And you guys in Vineland stand strong, all over New Jersey, we support you, I drove from Logan Township to support you, keep strong.
After Ms. McGarvey, we'll hear from Nick Stouffer.
Hi, my name is Heather McGarvey, and I have been a lifelong resident of South Jersey, and I just want to thank the board here for standing up for parents' rights, and even just, many boards aren't even considering removing this policy, but the tide is slowly turning. I am with the New Jersey Project, and I just want to make it clear that I don't know anybody up here, I don't know where you guys got the idea that people were saying that somebody up here is from the New Jersey Project, and they are not. I drove here from Schumong. Everybody supports you guys in your belief as parents' rights first. We've reached a point in society where things that weren't acceptable are now being pushed down our throats. There is actually, a teacher got up here and said, "I work for a public school, and I am in charge of gay students in middle school. If you're talking to children that are 11 to 13 years old about sex, you should be investigated at the very least." I'm hoping you vote the right way and repeal this terrible piece of, I don't know what you'd call it, I wouldn't call it legislation, because it's only a guideline, it's not required, there's no reason for this to continue on. Parents are the ultimate source, parents love their kids more than anybody. I am a mother of seven, and nobody loves them more than me. And these parents here love their kids more than you, their teachers, anybody else. They brought them into the world, they have cared for them and loved them. To keep something from them should be criminal. I just want to thank you for your time, and I pray that you stay strong.
After Nick Stouffer, we'll hear from Pastor Paula Doris. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Nick Stouffer, I'm also from the New Jersey Project, and I don't know any of the school members up here, I was asked to speak on behalf of the parents here. I'd just like to let you know that in 5756 allows a child to change in their permanent record, their name and their gender. They also are able to tell the entire school, including staff and teachers, their new name and students, they're all required to use this in your school. If the staff, the students, and the teachers, and the kids' parents all know your new identity, you're out. You are not hiding anything from anybody, it's only where it's going to come from. And it is better that it comes from the staff than it comes from someone who, from another kid, or from another parent who you know. It is unfair to the parents to keep this information from them, because we are right now in a mental health crisis. It is a huge mental illness pandemic happening right now. And you know what's comorbid, and the mental health illness also has increased the suicide rate of youth. The only way that you can help kids by preventing suicide is getting their parents involved with their mental health. Hiding mental health indicators from parents makes you culpable in a suicide. You can, this does not protect, this policy is not law, this policy is nothing like the law. The law is completely different. The difference in the policy is, is that no one in the law, the law does not state that you have to keep confidentiality from parents. It is supposed to be confidentiality from staff and students, but it's the reverse of that. It is now you're hiding information from parents, and it's not going to end well for the student, because parents who are involved in their children's lives have more successful outcomes than parents who aren't. And most of the people want to know, and children lie for a number of reasons, it's not because they're afraid of their parents, there's a million reasons why teenagers lie, that's what they do. I mean, come on, everybody, you're telling me that you never lied to your parents as a teenager? It's ridiculous. So you don't want to keep this vital information from parents, because it could be an indicator of mental illness. Because right now, the transgender, along with the mental illness that is rising, also is the number of non-binary students, right? The number of non-binary students since 2019 has risen at least 4,000%. That's a problem, and you and the teachers and the staff do not know the difference between a child who's just changing their name and a child who is at risk for mental illness. So you're not protecting the parents, because right now, and you're not protecting the students, and you're certainly not protecting the teachers, because they will be sued by parents when this goes in the wrong way.
Thank you, time's up.
After Pastor Doris, we'll hear from Julia Hankerson.
Good evening to everyone here, thank you board for having us here. I just want to say, so many people came up and speak about many things. In the book of Genesis, the Bible said, "In the beginning, God." "In the beginning, God, before anyone was created, it was God." The breath that we breathe in our body belongs to God. It belongs to God. And God created male and female in his own image. In the image of God created he/them, male and female. And what we're doing today with this agenda, taking parents right, but it started from way back when we took prayer at a school. It started from the White House, when we legalized so many things that is against God. But there will be a day when every one of us will stand before a living God. And you will give an account, because the Bible exceed any papers that you got in your heads right now. The Bible exceed the White House. It exceed the White House. It is the word of the living God, and that is what we all will be judged for, the word of God. God bless you.
After Ms. Hankerson, we'll hear from Ola Chernenko.
Hello. I am Reverend Dr. Julia Hankerson. I also am a licensed clinical social worker. And the first thing I'd like to, I'm going to talk from a religious point of view, because I think that sometimes we make these type of decisions based on religion, but before that, I'd just like to say, as a social worker and a clinical social worker, I've actually treated children who were trans, and it's a very serious matter. It's a process for them coming out, and oftentimes, the issue is that they don't have a trusted adult that they can talk with. That starts the process, and if that's in the school, the school has to follow the process, they can't just go and tell the parents, because that could really be detrimental to the child. Now, from a religious point of view, Jesus said, "A new commandment I give you, love one another as I have loved you, so you must love one another." One of the core commandments of Judaism is love your neighbor as yourself. But not just those two religions, Muhammad, Buddha, Gandhi, atheists, agnostics, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., all teach us about love, and the quality that permeates throughout all teachings and brings us together as one is love. Now, most of you have heard of the Ten Commandments, you know, love God, love your neighbor, don't try to take your neighbor's stuff, including their husband or their wife, and so on. In reading the Ten Commandments, you will find that our Heavenly Father was teaching us to love and respect each other. Now, God himself provided us with the Ten Commandments, and then the religious leaders of that day decided to expound on them by adding another 603 additional laws that can mainly be found in Leviticus, which incidentally, is where the scripture is found that is often used against LGBTQ folks by saying, "Men who sleep with men is condemned." But that phrase is translated in error. The true translation of that phrase is, "Men who sleep with little boys are pedophilia." And really, doesn't that make way more sense? Now, the most, okay, you don't have to agree with me. Now, the most utilized scripture in the Bible is John 3:16. "For God so loved the world," you all know that, you Christians, that he gave his only begotten son? But here's the thing, it says, "God so loved the world," that includes everyone. There is no exclusions. Today, we as Christians have some big shoes to fill as followers of Christ.
I have to ask you to finish up, please, time.
After Mr. Chernenko, we'll hear from John Carlin.
Good evening, my name is Oleg Chernenko, thank you for the attempt in the pronunciation. I am a Violin High School alumni, and Lord willing, I am a future parent. School students are going through a lot of changes, confusions, hormones, et cetera, it is not an easy time for many. The LGBTQ community have even more difficulty navigating their identity, their purpose, and their value. They need help and support through this journey of life. They do not need more confusion and more complication. However, these deep matters of life are supposed to be dealt with parents at home, not with insecure, irresponsible underage kids in a locker room who are just as confused themselves as anyone else struggling to find themselves. For those under the age of 18, parents are responsible to consent or decline what their children do. Yes, we must maintain student rights to be themselves, but we must also maintain the rights of parents. Parents are there to help and to protect their children. If parents are not safe, then they must be dealt with accordingly, case by case, without dismissing the rights of all other responsible, God-fearing parents. Speaking of God, a verbal apology will not suffice, but nonetheless, on behalf of the Church, I apologize for any way that religion has hated you or hurt you. That was misguided people, that was not God, okay? God does not condemn you or hate you, God loves you. Anyway, children need help processing their lives and identity and their feelings. Parents and other leaders in their lives are here to help with that. Education is crucial for our society, but we must keep schools in their place. Schools have not and will not raise these children. Schools are at best here to support the children, not further complicate their development. Parents are responsible to raise productive citizens and healthy adults. Schools are here to educate students and at best, support their growth, not complicate it. Disconnecting students from their parents will disrupt the development and foundation of these underage students. Not to mention that it will cause more issues at home than they may already face. Yes, some parents may have tragically abused their children, and they must be dealt with accordingly, but at the same time, some schools and teachers have also been abusers. We don't take away teachers' rights for the misuse of the few, we must not take away parental rights for the abuse of the few.
Sir, I have to ask you to...
Sounds good. Please allow the rest of responsible parents to have their rights to raise their children the best they understand, thank you very much.
After Mr. Carlin, we'll hear from Nizarah Padilla.
I attend Chestnut Assembly of God Church, one day I'm going to have kids and a family, and I just want to say before I say anything is that I love you guys, you know, no matter what, you guys, I have so much love for you guys. And no matter where we maybe disagree on things, or you know, I don't accept certain things, I still got so much love for you guys in such an amazing way, and I'm sorry if anybody hurt you, because we're supposed to love you guys. I'm just talking to you guys, I'm not bad, but, part of my testimony is, I grew up Catholic, and I had no relationship with God, and through high school, I was a little bit atheist, and I didn't really believe in God. So, I got the lowest point in my life in 2021, in August, where I had anxiety, depression, all these thoughts that were not from me, and I came to God, I said, "You know what, I'm following the Catholic religion for two and a half, three weeks, I had no encounter with God." I said, "If you are real, I'll follow you head-on, head-on." And He just encountered me with the Holy Spirit in such a supernatural way that anybody in this room can encounter Him and have full freedom in His name. Before I came to Christ, I had no identity, I didn't know who I was. When I found Christ, my identity was in Christ. We live in a country where you can't say the name of Jesus Christ, and we live in a country where we cannot say Jesus Christ, and I'm not going to be ashamed to say the name of Jesus Christ, and neither should our kids. Not a single person in this room should be ashamed to say the name of Jesus Christ. Each and every one of us have a soul in this room, whether you know it or not, we have a soul. And one day, we're all going to come face to face with the real living God, Jesus Christ, and what are you going to say to Him? What are you going to say to Him in that time, when you come close to Him? He loves each and every one of you guys, even if you don't know Him, I tell you to just have a relationship with Him, get to know Him, and He'll change your mind on everything, just like He did for me. I advise each and every one of you guys to really think about what you're doing before you make a decision. I ask that you pray on it, talk to Jesus, get to know Him, get to know what He talks about in the Bible. And I promise you, each and every one of these kids need to be protected. And one day, I'm going to have a family that, who knows, you know, with the way things are going nowadays, I might have to homeschool them. I don't want to homeschool my kids, I want them to have interactions with other kids and other people. So I advise you to just think about what you're doing. Thank you. Have a good night.
Next speaker will be Wayne Zanny.
Hi, my name's Nizarah Padilla, and I attend at the Transformation Church, and I'm 15. I'm 15, a freshman at Violin High School, and I'm strongly against our policy. Parents are not probably the problem, it's the kids who want to act grown, okay? Parents have the right to know everything that happens in school. Parents have the right to know everything that happens in school. I do not, I do not want to be in a bathroom and feel uncomfortable and not safe for the transgender person there with me, my boy. And it's called a women's bathroom for a reason, okay? This also, this also goes for the men's bathroom. The problem we are having here is an identity issue. Your identity is found in Christ and Christ alone, okay? I am also against bullying. I have stood up for friends over being bullied, so I do not judge at all, okay? I am a child of God, and I stand in a Bible and the Word of God. A man's a man, and a woman's a woman. Period, okay? Please do not keep this policy 5756.
After Minister Zanny, we'll have David Abou.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Zanny, Violin, New Jersey. I am a retired teacher, a former New Jersey Education Association representative, and for over 20 years, an adjunct professor at several colleges and universities in New Jersey. I'm here to speak against 5756. The speakers tonight have been articulate, they've been emotional, they've been impressive, and I am proud of my hometown of Violin, New Jersey. I'd like to approach this from just a different perspective. I see two issues here. I see the issue of understanding sex and the issue of understanding gender identity. And what I've concluded is that this issue before us is part of the darkest chapter in America's educational history. A hundred years ago, a hundred years ago, 30 states in America had practiced forced sterilization among women in mental hospitals, and progressives said that was the right side of history. Well, that proved to be false, and that's no longer practiced. It is my prayer that gender identity will also fall for this reason. The Educational Amendments Act of 1972 that we commonly know as Title IX specified two sexes in defining women's equality. And that was the rule of the land until in 2010, the President redefined Title IX to include the fluidity of gender identity. And the difference between the two is that sex refers to a biological science that is a proven fact, as so many people have said. Gender identity is a social science construct not based on fact. A few years ago, Governor Christie doubled down with this policy that supported the idea of gender identity, and this is what we have today with 5756. Now, I have here before me a synopsis of 5756. I've read this. I ask...
Time is up, please.
I ask that those of you that vote...
I have...
That you take the following message to the Governor, and the message is this...
Mr. Zanny, I need you to please stop.
Abou?
Thank you for trying.
I apologize.
That's okay. That happens. All right, I stand here today, and I thank you for putting this together, and I wanna thank everyone for coming. But first and foremost, I stand here to defending of the Word of God. I'm a man of faith. I have four childrens. And I'm against this policy. Yeah, there is some that are hurting because of differences, but the difference is in the, it's in the mind. It's a spiritual thing. You have to understand, love is love. But that sister that was talking about love, I don't know what kind of love she was talking about. But what I'm saying is, we must protect the youngest and the weakest of us at all times. Even in the forefront, when we're in the line, we defend who that is weak, and we don't leave no man behind. But one thing I tell you, we all will face the Great Creator, and we will have to answer to these calls. And all I say is, the Bible speaks of righteous judgment, and we shall do so, but hold it dear to heart that we must protect the weakest among us. And I am sorry that those got hurt, and I'm not here to judge, I'm here to love. I'm sorry for the hurt, and I'm sorry for the implications, but I pray, in Jesus Christ's name, that you do a wise choice. God bless you, and good night.
Madam President, that's all I have.
Yep, going right to... Mr. Yano, motions or resolutions?
Yes, thank you. We're going to group these together, so I'm requesting discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.3, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding procedures and operations items 2.1 through 2.6, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding buildings and grounds items 3.1.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval of finance items 4.1 through 4.16, as noted on our agenda this evening.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding buildings and grounds items 3.1.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval of finance items 4.1 through 4.16, as noted on our agenda this evening.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes, but abstained on 4.13.
Thank you. Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
eleven B, proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. Approval of the second reading to repeal the following policy, 5756 transgender students. Do I have any questions or comments? Yes, some questions. All right, my first question, how is this policy not deceitful? In school records, paragraph, page three of page four, first sentence, "If a student has expressed a preference to be called by a name other than their birth name, permanent student records containing the student's birth name should be kept in a separate confidential file. This file should only be shared with appropriate school staff members and after consultation with a student." So I ask you, how is that not being deceitful? All right, to any administrator that would like to... To any administrator that would like to answer that question to help me understand it better, because as we both, as we all witnessed this evening, there is some disconnect there. So I'm just, I'd like to get an explanation on that one. Can you, again, just point me to which page, which item? School records, right? Absolutely, Superintendent. So, page four, policy 5756, the very first sentence under the section, "School Records." So, policy 5756 is a direct expression of the New Jersey law against discrimination, which provides certain rights to students who identify or choose to identify differently. This policy names exactly what the law provides a child, a high school-age student typically, and the decision they can make. Our experience, based on our social workers and work, and you were at a meeting recently where our social workers explained how typically we are guiding students to have conversations with their parents. And students are encouraged to understand that by changing their record, they may be exposing themselves, because there are, there are times when a parent can log in. Right now, if a parent logs into Genesis, they'll see any name change that happens there. So typically, anything that occurs with name changes, parents are involved in that process as the policy allows. There's a confidentiality plan that is recommended to be put together. Our experiences, that most often, you know, our teachers, our social workers are able to accommodate a conversation between the child and the parent. So, I understand there are times, though, where that information is not revealed. It's because it's in compliance with the way the law is written, and our staff cannot be outside of that, as has been stated earlier. We must remain in compliance with the law against discrimination, our civil rights laws, Title IX. There's a series of federal and state guidelines that require us to follow those procedures. So, you know, I wouldn't use the word, I don't agree with the word deceitful, because no one is trying to be deceitful with families. We're trying to support students who are going through a very difficult time. Thank you for clarifying that, but the word deceit was used many times this evening, so just wanted to clarify that. Okay? Another, back to that same school records, it also states, "If a school district changes a student's name or identity, it must also maintain locally a separate record reflecting the student's legal name and sex assignment at birth until receipt of documentation of a legal change of name or gender." So we're asking, are we asking our trained professionals, as in educators, teachers, administration, are we asking them to keep a separate file? And why, why would we keep a separate file if we didn't, or if we were going to keep everyone inclusive and everyone involved in the decision? We maintain a record of any change. We have a student information management system. There's one system that keeps, it's an electronic record. When a name change is created in that system, there's also a historical component that keeps and maintains the original name. This way, sometimes, children, because of, there might be a change of mind, maybe there's a conversation with a parent, and they choose to revert back to their original name that's in the system. So maintaining a record of all names is required. So it's not a separate, it's not a separate record in a, excuse me, excuse me. I listen to everyone. Now, have some respect and let me answer the question that's being posed by our board member. It is one system that includes all the information in a child. It's not a sep, the way you're reading, it makes it sound like it's a separate location. It's not. It's all in our student information system, which is Genesis. Which is why I find fault in this policy. You know, because it's confusing, to be quite honest. And it's not written correctly, which is why we're here and we're discussing it. All right? But thank you for taking the time to answer that question in front of the public.
Mr. Holmes?
Quick question for Mr. DeSanto. Should this policy be repealed this evening? What's the guidance moving forward? Your legal opinion?
Mr. Holmes, and this is not punting in any way, as a result of the apparent threat of litigation, my communications with the board are protected by attorney-client privilege. I really can't discuss this with the board in public. And that's because of the threat of litigation. If this were a routine matter, I certainly would answer, as I've done many times.
Any further questions?
Another question, follow-up to that. If this policy is repealed, what are the next steps, Mr. DeSanto? Mr. Yano?
Thank you. Right. As I mentioned in the earlier board meeting, and also as indicated by our association president, at no time can our staff members be in opposition to the law. So, it would be my understanding that I need to provide our district employees, our staff members, with a standard operating procedure of how to address transgender students, which would look very similar to the current policy, because that is the way it's written in the law. We, districts have had other opportunities to look at changing language, but that has gotten a run afoul of the law. So, it'll be, it'll look very similar to current policy 5756, to standard operating procedure, and to receive additional guidance when this court case is litigated and there's a final resolution to it. a teacher, you're a guidance counselor, whatever you are, as soon as a student says something to you, say, "I'm sorry, I'm not qualified to discuss it with you, I'll refer you to my superior." I really don't understand. Now, we've been working, I don't know what guidance is when you went to school. When I went to school, they helped you to get into college, they helped you to get jobs. They didn't tell you what doctor to go to for a sex change.
Can I?
Now, we have a school system where discipline is a problem in the 9, 10, 11, 12 buildings, and we have to work on that. We have a school system where we have way too many students, somewhere around 80% of them are not on grade level. Those are the things, those are the things that we should be addressing. So as I said, I intend to move on to other issues that we have to address, and this is done, as far as I'm concerned.
I would like to add that, as a superintendent, it is my responsibility to direct staff on how to address student issues, whether they be students who are transitioning, or students who are having challenges, in whatever field. So I will be providing that information to our staff. It is my responsibility. I know you were given information about how to proceed. That information will come from me, and I look forward to having the support of the community, because it's about doing this together, the work, and our teachers and our students, because we want to have a very safe and welcome environment for all of our children.
Are we done with discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion and second for the approval of the Second Reading to repeal following policy 5756? Do I have a motion and second?
So moved, second.
Mrs. Cottisbody? Just a point of order. Since we had confusion some other time, I just want to make sure that the board knows that a yes vote is to repeal, a no vote is to sustain the policy. And once Mr. Mustaral announces the motion carried or defeated, that's it, there can be no change of votes. So perhaps you can pause for a moment, in case somebody wants to consider before you announce motion carried or motion defeated. Okay?
Roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Sorry, was there a first and second? First of all, I'd like to thank each and every member of the community that came out to speak today. I know that this is an issue that people feel extremely passionate about, and I respect the decision, the beliefs and the decisions of each and every family. However, it is my belief that we must protect the rights of every student in our school district, particularly those students who are most at risk. Every, every child, correct. Advocates argue that transgender students have the right to privacy regarding their gender identity. Policy 5756 supports the idea that a student's transgender status and the details of their transition should be confidential, shared only with individuals the student teaches. I am not in a position to say that a student who confides in a trusted teacher, guidance counselor, school administrator should be outed out for that decision to try to talk to someone that they believe that they can trust in the school districts. After reading the many reports, after reading the many reports issued by various organizations, I also, I believe that our students are certainly facing, particularly in Cumberland County, not just all students, there are so many students facing mental health crisis, but particularly our LGBTQ community. Our students do not have the access to the mental health that they need. Sometimes the only access they have is a trusted teacher, a guidance counselor, someone that they can talk to if they do not feel that they can go home and tell their parents.
The board has sat here and has been very respectful to every speaker tonight. I'm going to ask that everyone here is at least respectful to each of these board members.
In Monmouth County, in Monmouth Ca -- oh. Absolutely. As many of you know, the same issue has caused a lot of school boards to attempt to either revise or to repeal policy 5756. Particularly in Monmouth County, the issue of revising policy 5756 to include parental notification went before the court, the General Equity Division of Superior Court in Monmouth The court, in that instance, issued an injunction which approved, essentially stayed the decisions of those school districts to revise their policies. And the judge's rationale, Judge Bowman, said that he accepted parents' rights in deciding matters for their children, but the state also had the right to prevent children belonging to protected groups from being harmed under the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination. Bowman wrote in the court order that the state demonstrated a reasonable probability of success on its claim that the amended policies will unlawfully subject these students to a disparate impact under the Law Against Discrimination. The statistical possibility that even one transgender student affected by the amended policies could run away from home or attempt to commit suicide is sufficient to tip the balance of equities in favor of the state, Bowman wrote in his order. I cannot take a chance or risk the life of not even, of any of our students. And I believe that this law, having been already, or I'm sorry, this policy, which has been a policy of the Violent Public Schools for the last 10 years, which has only caused guidance and support for our teachers, administrators, and students, and has not harmed any student in any way, as far as I know, because I have not heard one person speak of any harm of this policy, I believe that it would, if, as Judge Bowman indicated, if there is any chance that even one child could be hurt by repealing this policy, I cannot support that. So my vote is no.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Before I vote, let me just give some comments. It is evident that as a board, we need to take responsibility and accountability for the division exemplified this evening. It is also evident that some of our community is uneducated and indoctrinated with falsehoods in a lot of scenarios that are not happening in the Violent Public School District. Since 2014 to this date, this has not been an issue, and if there was, it did not reach the board level. Less than 1% of our students identify, which is why the majority is here tonight against the policy. Let me just commend our guidance counselors, child study team workers, social workers who we met with last week, who gave us relevant, relevant, factual scenarios concerning our students. They made it clear that they give our students the necessary tools to be comfortable enough to share what they're going through with their families from the beginning. My prayer is that our students will still feel comfortable sharing their struggles, whatever they may be, with people that they can trust. We must move forward. My vote will be no for the repeal.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's seven to two vote.
Do I have a motion and sec -- Questions and comments? Are there any questions and comments for the approval of the itemized bill list for December 2023? Drive a motion and second.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Abstain.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain, I wasn't on the board.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
There are no emergent items, there's no old business, no new business. Board member comments, I'm going to start with Mr. Fiocchi.
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Costa?
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today and expressing your views. I certainly respect everyone's views, and what I can say to our, to all our students, teachers, and for those students who feel that perhaps today's vote will not support them, the law is very clear that despite the fact that there is a repeal of this policy, all students will be protected. The superintendent, teachers, administrators will all support all students and will not tolerate discrimination, bullying against any child, regardless of who they are and what they represent, or what they -- I'm just a little bit concerned, because I do not want our students to believe that we don't care about them, that we don't sympathize with the hardships that they go through. And I certainly believe that, as a whole, our teachers, our guidance counselors, and our administrators are always there to support them, and will continue to do so like they've done in the past. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Mr. Medio?
When I was elected, I put a couple of things out, and the main one was, there's a problem at the high school with discipline. One person mentioned that here tonight. We're looking at it, we had an ad hoc committee meeting. At the next committee meeting, we'll be discussing with the assistant principals and the principals what changes can be made to improve discipline. Without discipline, you can't have learning. And if you look at our numbers, I believe our meeting last month, it was glossed over, but something like 85% of our students are not on level at the high school, which is about as bad as it can be. I'm not too sure that Camden and Newark are any worse than that. So that's one of the main things we have to look at, and we also have to look at moving money around in our budget to give a little more in the way of rewards to the students who accomplish, and a little less in the way of the students who don't. It's a sad fact, but that's how it has to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
Okay, thank you to all our flag salute students from Menys Elementary and Wallace School for honoring our flag. Yesterday, I met with some fellow board members, Superintendent Yano, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Sneathern, Rossini Salerno, and Gina Masur at Memorial Middle School and Johnson School. It was a very busy month for me and with the board. We met with students from grade levels six, seventh, and eighth. To me, they were student ambassadors. They were, it was a very enlightening experience for me to listen to these honor students excelling, that are all excelling in their academics, they're well behaved, and overall really good kids. We were there to get feedback from their school experience. For example, one question to them was, "If you had one thing that you could change, what would it be?" Well, let me tell you, these kids knew exactly what they wanted. Some of the comments were better lunch food options, a hot breakfast, deadlines for more lenient assignments and projects, dress code, allowing them to express themselves throughout, through themselves, express themselves through their clothing, excuse me, be more respectful to one another, more enrichment classes to hang with friends, build better community within the school, more help from their teachers, extend study hall to get more work done, outside activities, better middle school athletic programs and offerings. And my favorite was less homework. All right? These were kids expressing what they could do better. Parents, you would have been very proud of these kids. A good amount of them knew exactly what they wanted to be in life, what high school they wanted to attend, what university they wanted to attend, and what career options. Talking sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, it just was very impressive. And one student that stood out to me was a student from Memorial School. The student wants to be a writer. The student even wrote their first murder mystery book, and the librarian from Memorial School actually published it and made a copy that's in their library for the student. Yeah, awesome. So our violent upper administrators engaged in conversation with them on many topics and listened to their words. I'm glad I attended the student work session. What a great example of a positive reinforcement. So students and parents, you're a vital part of your child and its education. We don't leave it up to just educators. It starts at home. Okay? So if you want to make a positive change, this could be your shot, kids. Work harder with your studies. Behave in all that you do in school. Show respect to your fellow classmates, your teachers, your administrators. Okay? And then you could be maybe part of the positive change in your school. Couple more things, and then I'm done, I promise. I'd like to wish everyone a healthy -- I would like to wish everyone a healthy, safe, and happy President's Day, as we respect, pay respect and honor -- happy President's Day as we respect, repay respect and honor to our past and present leaders of the free world, the United States of American President. I'd also like to salute Black History Month as we honor the celebrations and sacrifices, as we honor the celebrations and sacrifices of African Americans who helped shape our nation. And I'll finish with this, and I quote, "The function of an education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of a true education." Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank these, the Safety Patrol from Minnis and from Wallace for leading us in the flag salute. Amazing things are happening at the high school, at the middle school level. I'm so proud to be part of this school district. We have so many programs that are available to our kids, so many ways that they can see themselves in the future in these fields that we're creating, these courses and these programs that we're creating in our school district. Tomorrow, when the bell rings, all students, no matter who you are, will be protected the same, will be treated the same. Because the notion, because the notion that people only treat people well because there's a policy in place is ridiculous. The notion that people won't know what to do is ridiculous. If you're a human and you're a kind, loving person, regardless of what policy is in place, you will be a human and you will still be loving and caring. No policy can teach that. I am a product of these school, of this school system. I am a lifelong resident of violent. Kids are not treated well in our school system and in our community because there's policies in place. It's because we're from violent. It's who we are. We love each other, we respect each other. I can't speak for other communities, but I can speak for violent. We love each other. And the notion that all hell will break loose tomorrow is irresponsible to be spreading. It's inciting for something to happen. So I will not stand for that, for those kind of comments. And for anyone that hasn't been paying attention for the last three years, you know where I stand. You don't watch the YouTube then. You don't sit in those seats. I am all for parental rights. Parental rights are absolute, 100%. As a father of children in this school system, I expect to know every detail that's going on with my children. Whether you agree with it or not, no one is going to be outing anyone. It is not the policy of this board to not create a policy where children are going to be outed. No. It is the policy of this board to continue caring and loving and taking care of our children or of educating our children.
In 2019, more than 500 school districts approved this policy, believing it was mandatory. It was not. People saying it was mandatory was an outside consulting group. And I don't know about anybody else up here, but the more I read it, the more I didn't like the way it came down so hard on parents' rights being abridged. I'm a dad of two boys and I always told them, there is no problem that you can have or no issue that you can confront that we can't work on together. Now, maybe I'm too naive, but I think that it's possible that we can have laws against discrimination and not abridge parents' rights. So if someone wants to replace 5756, let's see it. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Nothing at this time.
Superintendent?
Thank you. All board members received an update on NJGPA that was provided by our curriculum team. I want to share the community and everyone who's watching on YouTube and tell your friends, 80% of the students at the high school are not, that, that is false, that is a, that's the wrong information. It's, it was listed on a presentation, 80% of the students who took the second part of the NJGPA were not graduation ready, but by this point, there are multiple pathways for a student to achieve graduation-ready status. So the number's much smaller than that. Yes, we do have some instructional challenges at the high school, but it's not 80% of the whole grade, the whole school. That's, that's not accurate. And I want to just clarify that right here. We can do a follow-up presentation at the next board meeting, but I encourage all of our board members, please look at the documentation that was sent to you. It is very clear in there as far as the, the way students become, students become eligible for graduation, beginning in 11th grade, they have multiple opportunities to pass the NJGPA. And at the same time, they have to take the SAT, PSATs, other assessments, they can become, they can qualify under that, the second pathway. And if they don't pass the NJGPA or have an SAT score that qualifies you, there's a third pathway, which is our CRTs. Our high school staff has already submitted multiple CRTs for review by the state. So our students are on the path to, to graduation. To Mr. Rivera's point, I agree, you know, this, this community loves their students. That's why since 2010, there was a transgender policy that was in effect. The board saw it appropriate to adopt a policy at that time. But tonight, we even heard kind of a change of, of language. If a child expresses a concern or, or, or needs support from their teacher, we heard it's stated up here, "Don't, don't talk to me about it, send it to an administrator." That's the wrong message. That's why people are worried. That's exactly the opposite of what I, my mandate is to allow. We have to support our families. I, I, I too believe everything will be in order tomorrow. Our high school staff will have everything prepared for our children. I've heard only, but, nothing but care and concern. But I have heard from the kids directly at the high school who feel that this is leaving them twisted in the wind without those supports. I know we'll do a great job with them. I know our high school staff are going to really step up. They're already doing the work every day. But I wanted to be clear, the, the message that I'm sending is, do not just pass the issue on to the next person, support our students, embrace them. Because if you pass them on, that'll kind of confirm what we've heard as a, as a, as a negative outcome of this whole process. So I encourage everyone to just take a deep breath. We're going to get it together, we're going to support our kids, we're going to do what's right for them because it's the law, it's what we have to do. And as a superintendent, we have to make sure that we are in compliance with the law. And I know our Board of Education will also support what we're doing for our students. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And I had a bunch of items. We had a great time at Memorial and Johnstone, next week, Pillar and Wallace School. When our board members get to hear our babies speak, they hear just the light and the opportunity that's out there, the amazing, you know, just conversations we're having, where kids are telling us, "I'm going to Arizona State University and I'm going to study this exact thing. I'm going to Harvard, I'm going to Yale, I, I'm going to be a writer, I'm going to produce this. I want to be a social media influencer for positive messaging." It's just incredible what our kids can do. So I see it as my missi, my mission, along with our team that's here tonight, to bring people together and kind of just be the glue. Our schools are the glue of the community. We want to bring everyone together in a positive way. So I encourage everyone for being out here tonight, although we may not agree, I know we all love our kids and that's what's important.
I want to thank all of our students that came from Minnis and Wallace for leading us in our flag salute. It's always good having them here. I want to thank administration for answering our questions from one of our last presentations. They were very quick to get us the information that we requested. On January 29th, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bono, and I attended the induction of 24 new members to the National Honor Society. It was really great to see that. Congratulations to all of you for our new CTE program, for the continuation and addition of it. I am so excited about that, I can't even begin to tell you. We've been waiting a long time for that and it's going to be here and it's going to be in conjunction with Rowan, so I'm happy about that. To everyone who watched, attended, and spoke tonight, thank you. I wish we had this kind of crowd when we're doing presentations on our budget or presentations on our student development. We don't get that. Before I go any further, every board member here believes in the protection and rights for every single student. Over the past month, many groups and individuals have reached out, both positive and negative. Many of the board members sitting here tonight did their due diligence by doing extensive research on their own. Many parts of the policy have been misrepresented. As stated by many, this policy is non-mandated and redundant. School districts are still required to adhere to every part of the New Jersey Lad law regarding all students. If a student is afraid, there are protections in place for those students. Notification and decisions will now be made by central administration. I've heard numerous comments over the past month about suicide rates. I've done a lot of research with that. I believe the lowest rate is among those whose parents know or were notified, with the higher rate among students whose parents are not notified. I believe the highest or close to the highest rate of student suicides are among those who are bullied. And honestly, why isn't that important and why aren't we talking about that? Simply put, parents have rights to know what's going on with their own child. They have a right to see their child's record. It's odd that parents must sign a child to leave school early, get working papers, go on a trip, change course schedule, be given aspirin. Parents are notified if their child is depressed or threatens suicide, but they are not notified if their child wants to, wants to be referred to or wants to change sexes. It baffles me. One more thing, people have this misconception that board members are paid. That is not true. Many people have no idea that most of these board members, my board members, spend several hours a month between meetings and school-based events and functions. They care about each and every student and the district, in addition to their family lives, to their full-time job, or whatever else they may be involved with. What is not okay is what several of my board members have been dealing with for the past month. Intimidation, harassment, bullying, lies, attacks on our characters, all because we didn't all agree. Thank you to the board, my board, for doing your due diligence, every member of it, and doing what you believe is best for the entire district and students. With that, God bless you all, have a great night. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Aye.